Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30, and I will call our regular work session to order. And our work sessions are very informal, and we go directly to the agenda items. We'd like everyone to know that the meeting is conducted both in person and online. All council members are present, and our staff is also present in the chambers. The public can join us on BurnsvilleAMend.gov/Meets, or you can watch us on Channel 16 or 859. And if you would like to join, you can join us on Zoom.us/join, or by calling 651-372-8299. For more information, all items are on our webpage in the Council Agenda Packet. So, thank you. The first item on our agenda, and I think we'll go around the room because our legislators are kind enough to be with us, and thank you so much for joining us. And I'm going to go this way.
Michelle Collins, City Clerk.
Dan Gustafson, City Council.
Vince Workman, City Council.
Tanya Schwartz, City Chief.
Jenny Rutter, Chief Financial Officer.
Bethany Veraiman, Strategic Commissioners.
Lindsey Port, the Senator for the District.
I'm Representative Jess Hansen, representing the west side of the district.
I'm Jeff Thompson, the Community Development Director.
Graham Peterson, Public Works Director.
Dan Keely, City Council.
Kara Schultz. Oops, sorry. Kara Schultz, City Council.
Hugo McPhee, Deputy City Manager.
BJ Jungman, Fire Chief.
And we'll go to...
Neil Dewire, Assistant Chief, Burnsville Fire.
Liz Lortz, Dakota County Commissioner, Representative.
Mike O'Connor, Police Management.
Mike Miller, Police Management.
Ann Lucheski, one of Burnsville's lobbyists.
Nat Stager, Burnsville Police Captain.
Max Yacko, Burnsville Police Sergeant.
Welcome, everyone. And this is our 2023 Legislative Agenda Discussion with our legislators, and thank you so much for coming. I know it's a kind of a nasty night out, but we really appreciate that you took the time to come and visit with us. Our presenter this evening is BJ Jungman, our Fire Chief and Acting City Manager. Chief, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and welcome to Senator Port and Representative Hansen. Thanks for taking the time tonight to meet with us. We'll take a couple of minutes to go through our legislative agenda, and if you have any questions, feel free to just shut them out. This agenda shouldn't look unfamiliar to you. As you know, a lot of our priorities have stayed the same from last year to this year, and we'll have to accomplish some of them this year. So, as you know, the freeway landfill and dump is one of our top priorities to maintain our safe water quality in our cities. So, we really want to protect that groundwater and get that landfill remediated and lined appropriately. And as you know, the city's been supportive of the dig and haul option. So, we want to continue to work on that, and that's been a long-term project and will likely continue to be a multi-year effort. But we'll look to work with you on that. Our second item is... Is there any questions? Or, I'm sorry, Ryan, you got anything else to add to that? Okay.
All right.
Ryan's got a lot more of the technical details. He knows this inside and out, and I appreciate his expertise on that. The second item is around the ambulance service, the primary service area. So, the statutes around ambulance licensing were established in the early 80s and continue to have the same geography today, even though cities have changed significantly. Burnsville's lucky to own their ambulance license. There's some overlaps here, but none of our neighboring communities really have that, afforded that same opportunity and are seeing some challenges. And we would like them to be afforded the same opportunity that Burnsville has to be able to have some local decision-making around who their ambulance provider is and what level of service they get. So, we're looking to push through on that this year and make some headway. And as you likely know, there's a Legislative Audit Report that came out late February, early March this year that identified a lot of these same issues that we've been talking about for a number of years. The third one is around policymaking and local control. Seems like every year, there's things that come up at the legislature that like to take local control from cities and bring them to the state level. We want to keep that at the local level. We think our locally elected officials are in the best position to make decisions for the city of Burnsville. So, things like local option sales tax, franchise fees, building and fire code issues, things like that, whatever we can do to keep the local autonomy and local policymaking in the hands of our locally elected officials. So, those are three primary legislative items. If you flip it over to the back, we have supporting positions that are going to be led by either the MLC, Metro Cities, League of Minnesota Cities, any of those agencies. And the first one is the Host Community Economic Development Grant around hosting a regional landfill and being supportive of that funding. And then the second one is similar to that, but around aggregate mining and working with our mining folks and coming up with a host community fee for that.
Chief, I have just a comment on the Host Community Economic Development Grant Program. Now, there's been some rumor, but I don't know, that there might be another host community attitude. And if that's the case, I would hope that the grant will be expanded and that we won't lose any of the money that we have. But if you can, you know, confirm, or whichever that is, if that's a true statement or not.
I haven't heard. I haven't heard that, but I'm happy to go back and look into it and see if there's any conversation about that. I would agree if it is being expanded to an additional community that it needs to be increased to make sure it still is serving the community in the same way for the work that you are doing.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. So, that's from a legislative agenda point. And then the last item on there is a new one for us. We've come up with a state bonding request. So, this is the first time in a long time the city of Burnsville's asked the state to consider a bonding project within the city limits of Burnsville. And it's around the Highway 13 and Niccollet Avenue mobility. We want to see some great separated crossing there. As you're likely aware of, we've had some significant tragedies there, having pedestrians cross Highway 13 at Niccollet. And so, this would allow us to put a bridge in there and separate the traffic, the Highway 13 traffic from the Niccollet traffic and the pedestrians and bikes. So, there's a nice infographic sheet that Public Works Engineering has come up with with our partners on this that gives you a lot of the great facts around this. But we think this is a very important project from safety as well as traffic efficiency. So, we'll be asking for support on that so that we can be considered in the bonding process to accomplish it. We already have over $10 million of the 44 and 1/2 secured from other grants and sources. And so, again, we'll continue to pursue that and think that that's an important project. Ryan, you got it?
Yes. It's equal among traffic safety. This is a very multimodal approach to improving things with the two transit centers. And then, it is currently a Level Service F, so it's a failing intersection from a traffic management standpoint as well. And this would greatly improve that traffic management as well. So, it really hits all the... Every checkbox that you could do here would really improve and be a vast improvement to our traffic management system and heart of the city and all the transit users.
And here comes Senator Carlson. Thank you. Come on in. Yeah. Have a seat at the head...
Yeah.
By your colleagues. Yes. Yeah. So, as you know, Congresswoman Angie Craig had put in the appropriation bill, 3 million to help with the design work. And you also know that it passed the House. Now, it's in the Senate. So, she's working very hard to see that that goes through. So, our hope is that that gets done so we can get that 3 million to start the design work and move forward with this. There's too much. If you look at some of the critical factors around that, there's 38,000 vehicles a day that goes by there. And also, it's a commercial corridor. So, there's a lot of truck traffic. So, also want you all to know that I did send a letter to the Governor to ask that it be put into his bonding bill.
That's great. I'm really happy to see this on the agenda. I think it is a critical need for the city. You know, our... All of our condolences to the family of the person who recently died there. It's... It does meet all of the needs. Like you said, it's an F-rated intersection. It's a safety concern. It's transit. There's... You're considering bike and walking. You're really meeting all of the things that we look for when funding a project like this. And Senator Carlson and I had a conversation about it this morning with our Transportation Chair, so we'll be having the conversation there as well as in bonding.
So, this is very personal to us. These are our people, and when it happens to one of our family members, it impacts all of us. And for me, it goes back to the early 90s or late 80s when Christine Minnick, a young student who attended my parish, St. John the Baptist, when she was killed there crossing after a football game. So, we have worked so hard for such a long time to get a safe crossing on 13. And I think this is the time to hear the stories because it goes back that long. This was a 16-year-old, and her life was taken too early. And then, now we have more, and that's too many.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, really appreciate your help with all of that. I know, Ms. Lucheski, I think you've talked to all of the other legislators that represent us on our legislative agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, just Senator Carlson. We're trying to get on his calendar, but he's been briefed by Senator Port, as you just learned.
Yeah. And Representative Kayla Berg is already briefed.
Yes, and Representative Ryer.
Yeah. Okay. And very good. Chief?
Mayor, just real quick. We're very fortunate to work with Ann Lucheski and the team at Lockridge, Grindel Mallin, and really rely on them for the strategy to help us and our legislators get these things across the finish line. So, we're so thankful for their support and their ability to help us communicate this to the legislature and follow the process. And so, they'll be on board with us again this year to help us kind of navigate the strategy of the session this year, so.
And you all know, just as we did, and thank you for helping us get the tip for the shopping center project. You know, you got that through. I really appreciate all of the hard work that you all did for that. And if you need anything, it's the same process. Our staff is here to give you the information that you need to carry the bill. You all will work with Ann on who's going to do what, and we appreciate all of that. And if you need any information from us, our staff is here, ready to give you what you need, just like we did with the authorization for the shopping center. So, whatever it is that you need, we're here. We're one team working together for the good of Burnsville.
Absolutely. Thank you for all of your collaboration, you know, so far, and we are happy to continue working with you all to move these pieces forward. Ann has been a great help, but all the staff at the city has been really helpful in getting us the information we need.
Okay. So, remember... Do you have any questions for us?
I think the only... I don't know that I have any questions about, you know, on the freeway landfill. We are waiting for the Pollution Control Agency to get their next step done. I'm in close contact with them, and we'll continue to stay in touch with you all and with Ann as we continue to have conversations so that they can get their bid in, and hopefully we can get it in the Governor's budget. That will be a big piece of it. On the ambulance services, is that going to be... Are you having that drafted? Is that going to be similar to what we saw before? Are there any big changes to that?
With the dig and haul?
No, with the ambulance services.
Oh, the ambulance service.
Senator Port, thanks for the question. We're working with the Fire Chiefs Association right now to work on that, and Sonny Elliott will be our lobbyist on that. So, we'll be connecting soon on kind of what our next steps are. We're still working on the strategy piece of what that looks like, so.
Great. Just keep us posted on how we can be helpful on that.
We appreciate your support.
And then, for me, the other piece on the local control, we'll be having conversations in housing. And as the Housing Chair this year, I'm certain that conversations will come up again about zoning and things like that. I have enjoyed working with the city and want to make sure that we stay in close conversations about those. I don't anticipate big changes, but I'm certain the conversation will come up at the legislature. So, just want to make sure we stay in contact through that.
Yeah. And we're here... Yes, Senator Carlson.
Madam Chair, Madam Mayor. I'd like to know a little bit more about the federal money that you said that might be released. How is that coming to Minnesota? And I would assume that it has to have an appropriation by the legislature.
You mean the one that Senator...
Senator Greg is...
Congresswoman Angie Craig?
Yes.
It's an appropriation. It's in the appropriation. So, I think it comes directly to the city. I don't know for sure. I think we'll have to ask the Congresswoman about that process.
Yeah.
You know, because for a long time, the federal government didn't do appropriations, but they're back doing appropriations again.
Yep.
So, I'm not sure what that process is. We'll just have to ask her what that is.
Yeah. Well, Madam Mayor, generally, the federal government appropriates it to Minnesota, and then Minnesota has to appropriate it to a particular project or agency. So, it's... It can be held up in Minnesota for a time, and we'd like to make sure that we understand it right away so that we can act on it.
Let's work with Congresswoman Craig because, if I understand her correctly with what she told me, it was appropriated for this project. So, it was defined in her appropriation. Is that correct, Brian?
I would agree with you. Yes, that is the intent there. They were picking...
When Congressman Klein got us, what, 2 million for the 513? Didn't that come straight to the city?
Yeah.
That doesn't actually...
Senator Public...
That was the last... That was the last appropriation, and I don't remember how that was... This is...
I know it kick-started that whole project for us.
Yeah. But that was...
Okay. We'll find out.
Yeah. We'll work together. So, what are some of the things that you're working on that you think we ought to know about?
You know, for me, it'll be housing. As the new Chair of the Housing Committee in the Senate, we'll be having a lot of conversations about affordable housing, what that looks like, what communities can do. So, much of that work currently is being done by our cities and our counties, and so we want to lift up that work and increase funding to programs that are already working. So, staying in conversation about what's working here, what we need here, what communities like ours, you know, what can be effective across the state. We are mostly built out here, so part of that conversation won't be centered around this. But honestly, Burnsville has done a really good job of keeping naturally occurring affordable housing and continuing to keep that a focus. And that's something we want to lift up and make sure is continued across the state. So, I'll look forward to staying in conversation with you all about ways we can talk about the changes you all have made. I know you did tiny houses on property, mother-in-law suites, that sort of thing, to increase housing capacity, and those are really critical pieces that are necessary. We'll also be talking about the intersection of mental health resources and housing and making sure that supportive services that really are key to keeping people in stable housing are actually accessible to folks. And so, that's another place where, you know, Chief, we expect to be visiting with you about that, and the intersection of the opioid crisis and housing and treatment and what that all looks like.
Thank you. I'm so glad that you're chairing that committee, simply because Housing First has been out very aggressively to take away our local control on land use and zoning. And they will always blame the city because of our fees and charges, yet when you really look at the complete pro forma, the city's fees and charges is just only a fraction of the land costs, material costs, labor costs, and all of the other costs on top of all of that. And so, one of the things that I saw them present last week was looking at housing stock that was like single-car garages, and the models that they put up were from Indiana. Well, we're a different market, and we're a different economic zone. And I don't know what cities in the metro would say, "Single-car garages." We still, in the suburbs, like our automobiles.
We still need our automobiles. We don't have full transit access for people in our communities, so we still need cars. It is... I'm glad you brought that up. I think it's going to be another part of the conversation, but I don't believe that changes to zoning laws will fix the affordable housing crisis. It is perhaps a part of the conversation we should have, but it is one small piece when really what we're looking at is a critically underfunded resource at the federal level and at the state level over 45 years. And we are bearing the brunt of that right now. And really, cities and counties are the ones that have led on helping to keep people into... In safe housing, but we just drastically need to increase that. And we have an opportunity to at the state this year with the surplus. We have a real opportunity to make a critical investment in this area.
Thank you. It's good to hear that. So, if you can remember local control, we're the ones who know about our land use, and we're the ones who know about zoning and all of that. So, yeah. And I know I've sat in on meetings with Housing First, and it's... Their narrative is not always true. It's a very small factor when they blame cities. Yeah. Thank you. Yes, Kara?
So, first of all, thank you for mentioning tiny homes. That was a big passion of mine, and I was very happy that Burnsville was a city that had enough foresight on this particular issue because now other cities are catching up to us as, you know, it should be because we're better. I'm just going to say that. We're better than them. But, you know, so it's unfortunate of the other initiative group calling themselves Housing First because I did want to ask you about what used to really be known as Housing First, which was the idea that instead of making people meet all these requirements first, which were impossible for them to meet because they're not in stable housing, make them meet those first, and then they might get into housing, but probably will get kicked out. The idea was if you get people into a stable, safe environment first, then they can work on the other challenges they have, whether those are mental health issues or addiction issues or that type of thing. Is any of that conversation part of what you're talking about?
It will absolutely be a conversation in my committee. I strongly believe in actual Housing First.
Actual Housing First, yes.
I think that that's... It's a critical piece of how we solve this crisis. It is how we solve homelessness. It's the only path to solving homelessness. So, it will absolutely be a part of the conversation in my committee. Part of the reason that sort of the... It's changed over time, and people have, "Well, you need to get these services first," or "You need to be clean," or "You need to meet these requirements," is because we don't have enough housing. So, somebody's going to lose out, and people made a decision, "Well, these people are less worthy of housing because they have addiction or mental health problems, things like that." We just have to absolutely change the way we think about housing and who is deserving of housing. To me, housing is a human right. We should all have access to safe, affordable housing. And if we're drawing lines around who is worthy of that and who is not, we're just recreating a different mess. So, absolutely, that will be a key part of the conversation in my committee. I think we should not continue to, you know, sort of perpetually build these cycles and play into them. We have to... We have to say it ends here, and what that means is housing for all.
Thank you. And if I could follow up, on the... On our number-one initiative of the landfill and dig and line versus... Well, actually, it's dig and just throw it back up. And dig and haul so that we can both protect our water and no longer have Burnsville punished because we've frankly been... We've been punished to be the site for the county and even outside the county to have multiple landfills. And so, we do want a very strong commitment of support that in the House and in the State Senate, that you will look for Burnsville's best interest and that you will support us on pushing for dig and haul so that we are no longer just left with this burden and told, "We don't care about you. You have to just continue to suffer." And that's not fair for our residents on that. So, I do ask for each of yours' commitment on that.
And I'll just say, I've already had conversations with our bonding chairs, so I have been pushing on this issue very hard in the House. Because this will be one of the largest investments in state history, and our community deserves it. And as many of you know, I live across the street from this landfill, so I cannot leave my home or my neighborhood without seeing it. And so, I have a very constant reminder of what we have to do and what's at stake. I can see the mine, and I just, you know, see this clock ticking, if you will, and making sure that we're doing something about that is arguably one of my highest priorities in the legislature this year. One, because it's so expensive, but two, because there are such catastrophic outcomes if we don't do anything. This is the environmental crisis of the, you know, at least the decade, if not the century, right here in Minnesota, and it is the biggest environmental catastrophe facing us. So, I am fighting very hard for it.
Thank you for your commitment.
Yeah.
The same.
And Ann, I think you also got Kayla, Representative Kayla's commitment.
Yes, and Representative Ryer as well.
Yeah, Ryer, yes.
And I've been working with our entire Dakota County delegation as well and any other cities that have landfills to say, "Look, you might need us sometime." And right now, my community needs you. So, over the course of, you know, this election cycle, you know, we don't just run campaigns, right? I've been building solidarity with a number of different environmental organizations, a number of different water organizations, and really raising the alarm so that everybody around the state who cares about water from north to southeast to west knows that we have a problem here in Burnsville. And so, hopefully, I have rang the bell loud enough that everyone knows that we are coming for this money, and I will not be quiet if we don't get it.
Thank you. Because water is a precious resource, and we need to treasure it. And we can't take it for granted. Just because we're the state with a lot of water doesn't mean that we don't take care of the resource that we have today. And that's why all of the activities and strategies that we have put in place has helped to recharge the Jordan aquifer. So, and that was because of great partnerships between Kramer Mining and Material, the state, Burnsville, and Savage in bringing all of that to bear. And so, we will continue to work together, and thank you so much for all of that. Councilmember Workman.
And I just want to clarify that the water issue is of the utmost importance, but I would say secondary to that is that we don't see two new landfills peaking over 35W with the dig and line. If you look at the plan on the PCA website right now, they're proposing up to almost 800 feet on both sides of the freeway. And that would be devastating for Burnsville to have that garbage stacked on both sides of the entryway to Burnsville. And I know that Kirk is pushing for the lowest-cost option, but that option would be not good. And so, that's... We need your support for clean water, but we also need your support to make sure that that dig and line option does not happen as well.
Well, and it ends up not being the cheapest option because if we're able to redevelop, everyone will be able to recoup costs. The state, the city, the county, everyone gets to recoup costs then. If it is just pulled out, put a liner and slam it back down, put a big garbage mountain up there, we will... There will be no recouping of that cost. It just will not happen. So, it's not the cheapest one. It may look like it in the short term, but it's the most expensive option. Like, that's the crazy part of it is that that would... It's just pile money and light it on fire. Just do that instead. Like, that would be at least entertaining.
Yes, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm thinking that, you know, we've been involved in this for so long now, that it is time to get moving. And due to the economic recovery in Minnesota, we have this unexpected forecast of a large potential balance in the budget. And we don't know exactly the best way to invest that money. But one thing you're not gonna hear from me anymore, I guess, is the term "bonding bill," because it's an investment bill. And it's not gonna be any different if we use some of this as cash, or if we take it and borrow. So, whatever we're doing, we're investing. And I think you had a good point there, that there is a return on investment, and we always have to look at that. What's the best return on investment? What's the best way to get the funds for investment? And in this case, it could be some cash, it could be, we talked about a different kind of borrowing mechanism, that might even be a little more expensive in interest, but that might be the best way to go about it, too. Probably not, if you look at the papers and how interest rates are being kicked up. But the fact is that there's, there's a reason sometimes for borrowing. You don't zero out your savings account, or your 401K, if you want to buy a house. There, you go borrow some of the money. So, that might be the way to go about it. But we do need to know all of the inputs of it. We don't want to take this, use typical geo-bonds, and wind up not being able to develop that property. You want to make sure we can develop that property, and that's the return on investment that we're seeking. So, I'm right behind you. I'm fully behind you.
Glad you mentioned that, Senator, because in talking with Anne, the letter to the Governor is that it's not just about the bond, it's, there could be investment money with cash, or, Anne, what's the other?
Appropriation bonds.
And then some appropriations. So, there's, there are three things that can be done that will allow us to get to the return on investment, and get development done early. So, that was all included in the letter to the Governor. It's not just about the bonding bill. It's about, how do we do this the best way, with the different strategies that are available to us? Yeah. And so, Anne was very helpful with all of that, in designing that, and composing that letter.
Good. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, but thank you for your words and support around those three different strategies.
Sure, yes. I do want to add one more thing, and this is a special request of Anne. Put your phone number on your lobbyist registration.
Hey, Anne, you want to come to the table and sit next to Senator Carlson, since you're...
I have my business card that I...
You're critical to all of the work that we're doing right now, yet.
Right here.
Okay.
But yes, you know, this is, obviously, this is a very high priority. We do have that part in law where we might be able to do a taking, if it gets that bad. We do need to figure out what we can do with the landowner, and that's all coming to a head now. We have to have, you know, we really need to light a fire under everyone to get it done.
Wow, Senator Carlson, a taking? Okay, we haven't done that.
We got that passed a couple of years ago.
If that's one of your pathway forward, to get to that return on investment, and there's a public purpose, and a public purpose can be the protection of the water source, and so, I leave that up to you, you all. You know those pathways from your process at the legislature.
Madam Mayor, don't kid me, that isn't the first time you've thought about that. We, you know, we did have that ability if the leakage would go outside of the property lines. We didn't have it if we knew that it was gonna go outside of the property lines, so that's what we changed. And now, what we need to do is find out just how we can exercise a little bit more power there, and, or maybe some kind of consensus with the land that's on there, that the owner wants to keep, and that sort of thing. So, there's, there's still a lot of work, but I think we've gotten past knowing what's in there, or at least we've got a good sense of what's in there. And then there's another thing that I was thinking about, too. You know, we have some reclaim operations going on, even in Dakota County, out by Rosemont, where SKB is pulling out metals. And I know that, in this, this particular landfill, everybody dumped everything in there. There's a lot of steel and metal in there, and it may not be close to the surface when we actually changed having just construction materials and household waste in there. But my seatmate, Greg Clausen, said that he remembers helping his dad take an entire gas station down there, and dumping everything into that landfill. So, it's the pumps, the tanks, everything. So, that's the kind of thing that, you know, maybe we could set something up, maybe. So, there's, there's a possibility there of getting a contract with someone to pull out all of that steel.
Commissioner Workman, you want to come to the table? You have some inside information on SKB.
Well, I just love garbage.
Well, come to the table, garbage lady. I know, you've been, you've been doing that for a long time.
Oh, yeah. I just wanted to add something to Senator Carlson, thank you. SKB also collects the ash from the Hennepin burner, and they sift the metals out of the ash also. And the only thing I wanted to add about the freeway landfill is that you would actually, if you dig and haul, you'd actually be permanently removing a landfill from the state. And since, once they're closed, they go into the closed landfill account in the state, it becomes the state's responsibility. You won't have that with a dig and haul. So, it's, you're getting, permanently removing a landfill, which is always a good thing. No offense. Yours isn't closed. So, thank you.
Yeah, no. And that's good information, because I don't think it has, it has been discussed. But we all know that, once you dig and haul, you are removing a landfill and shifting it over to another landfill, so, yeah.
Madam Mayor, I did ask you the other day when we were talking about it, that the new permitting for the waste management area, that would handle this amount of refuse. And what I was thinking is that if there's a way to reduce the amount of refuse there, or to change it, or to even reclaim something, that might justify having somebody come in there and do that separation.
There's also been a discussion, Senator, about, I probably shouldn't bring this up, but since I am, about host fees paid to the county, because initially, host fees to that, there was a small amount, about $100,000 worth of host fees that were paid to Dakota County when they were still open and host fees became a thing. But there is an estimated, they've estimated about $66 million worth of host fees that the county would be eligible to collect. Now, that's been a discussion for the board. I personally have come out and said, it's not something we ever anticipated receiving. So, I would be, as one, there's seven of us, but as one, I would be in favor of waiving those fees, those host fees. I don't know how the other six feel, but I would lobby them, because it's not something we ever anticipated receiving. So, but that also adds to the, that cost that the MPCA is including in their big ticket price for the dig and haul. So, it's a discussion to be had, but it's something that needs to come back to the county.
Yeah. And Commissioner, thank you so much in sitting and talking with us about that, and having that discussion, and getting your commitment to saying that you will work to waive those fees, because that will help mitigate some of that cost that the state will have to deal with.
You might want to have that discussion next year. I just found out that I will be, on June 3rd, if the election goes correctly, I will be board chair next year.
Yay! Congratulations!
So, let's have it sooner rather than later.
Yeah, okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, we have some, we have some work to do, but it looks like all of the partners are gonna work hard to get us to getting this through, the dig and haul through. So, with Commissioner Workman's commitment to lobby her colleagues to waive the fee, that will also help a great deal. And with all the work that you all are going to do, and Senator Carlson, yeah, you work with Anne Lucheski, whereas Anne, all three of, with Anne to get that through, and working with the Governor and his staff on what's the best strategy for us to get to return on investment, and getting development done right away.
Good. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Okay. Chief?
Should we just check with Jess and Senator Carlson, if they have anything they want us to know?
Yeah. Anything else that you want us to know about what you're working on?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, I'm not sure if my, if my partners have mentioned what committees they're on. Have you mentioned theirs?
Oh, that, yeah.
There is some confidentiality here that we're risking, and so, I can't mention the committees, but I can say that I'm the chair of the Elections Committee.
Okay.
And also, let's just say, if things work out the way I've requested, I might be working with Chief Schwartz also on some judiciary and public safety. So, that's, and those are a couple of my primary issues this year. But elections is gonna take the, that's gonna take our real focus, and, no, I can't say who else is on the committee.
I didn't want to ask you to disclose anything until next year, but you can tell us what you're working on.
This would be, Madam Mayor, this would be disclosing sometime, maybe after the end of this week.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Representative Hansen, what are you working on?
So, I don't, we don't have our committee assignments yet, so I can't speak too much on that, but the areas that I have worked on in the past, in particular, have been around child welfare. We have the worst child welfare system in the country, which, as taxpayers, makes us the worst parents in the nation. And so, I'm gonna continue my work on there. Last year, I created the Office of a Youth Foster Ombuds Person, to provide a liaison between our state agencies and kids in foster care. Our existing ombudspersons for families, statutorily, did not feel like they were allowed or permitted to work with children outside of, without their parents. And as, obviously, kids in foster care are without their parents for the time being. And so, it's our responsibility to do that. So, I'm gonna continue working on that. I'm excited that we have a Children, Children and Families Committee coming up in the House this year, with Chair Pinto, so I've requested that one, but again, I don't know that I'll be there. And then continuing to work on my health, my work around mental health. As we know, we are still experiencing a mental health crisis. We have a lack of social workers in the state, which is a base point for a lot of our mental health practitioners. And so, continuing to look at how we can incentivize more folks to come to Minnesota and become social workers, and help out our law enforcement as much as possible, is gonna continue to be a focus of mine. And then lastly, I think, in addition to the things for our cities and our local governments, working on cannabis legalization is still at the forefront. We are really excited about what we are ready to put forward this year, and I encourage anyone who has questions, or comments, or feedback, to go ahead and email that information to me. As you can imagine, there are over half a million people very excited about legal cannabis in Minnesota, so we're getting a lot of questions about that, but always interested in hearing from more people, including cities. If you have any big ideas, send them my way. And then, of course, you know, just overall, some of the bigger goals that we want to work on is making sure our education system is fully funded, closing that cross, special education cross-subsidy. We have an opportunity to finally do that, to make sure the kids in our special education system are getting the best education possible, and make Minnesota a place where everybody gets a world-class education again. Making sure we can expand healthcare, that has been a question and comment I've heard from a lot of our small businesses around the community. Providing insurance to employees is hard. And so, expanding a Minnesota healthcare buy-in option to more people is exciting. We are, I think, we could really transform lives if we continue to move forward with that. And then just doing what we can to continue to support working families. A lot of the folks that I talked to over the summer this year are struggling. So, a lot of people living paycheck to paycheck, a lot of people who, you know, one big emergency will break their bank account, and so, just continuing to keep our ear to the ground to help out those middle-class families like mine, like so many of ours, is always going to be at the forefront for me. Yeah, I think those are the big things.
Wonderful. Councilmember Workman has a comment.
Congratulations, thank you, on THC. I'm wondering if there's been any chatter about next steps, and if psilocybin conversations are bubbling to the surface with mental health.
You are like on to the next kind of vision, if you will, as we have been approached by a number of people who are looking to expand what that looks like. I don't see any changes with that happening this year, but I do see a community building around it. And so, there's an organization called Big Psych that has been doing a lot of work to build community around this issue, and to continue to have some de-stigmatizing conversations. I'm also hearing about it in the mental health world, of looking for some protective, more protected clinical trials for a number of different substances like that. So, exciting things happening, but I don't think that we'll see anything move on that this year, in my opinion, at least.
I think the research is there.
You hear about that with the VFW and the Legions. The VFWs and the Legions are starting to get involved in that issue, particularly because of issues surrounding PTSD, so.
Treatment-resistant depression, and a number of other conditions, yeah.
I mean, it's replacing antidepressants.
In a lot of ways, yeah. It's really, if you haven't looked at the research on it, or Googled it in a while, it is very interesting to start to see what that conversation is growing to be, so thanks for bringing it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gustafson.
Will you be starting from scratch, from the, for the bill this year, as opposed to what was passed here, what, last year or the year before?
Sure. So, one of the big issues that we've had around cannabis legalization is the demand for Minnesotans to be transparent. And so, it's my goal to reintroduce where we left off last year, so that the vast majority of the conversations about changes can be done in public circles, without it happening kind of in this cloaked, you know, dark space. I have said since the beginning that this is a community-driven policy. We collected information from community, we continue to engage community on this. Our lobbyists are, most often, on this issue, consumers themselves, and so, making sure we're staying really close to the people most affected by this is important. We have a lot of work to do from last year's bill, so there will be changes in committees as we go forward. For example, our equity models need to evolve for what we've seen in legal states outside of Minnesota. And then, in addition to that, the THC policy that passed this year is very, as you know, I'm preaching to the choir here, loosely regulated, and so, we need to make sure we fold that in and have that there. We also have an opportunity to improve the packaging that we've used on these products. In other states, you know, using plastics is not great for the environment, and we have a fabulous hemp industry here in Minnesota, and so, expanding that. And I think the last thing that we'll see a lot of conversation around is around criminalization. And so, what does it look like for people who have past convictions? We have a plan, and it's in our platform to expunge that, but what does that look like for maybe some other charges that somebody may have encountered as a result of cannabis, and making sure there's resources for that? And then, going forward, what happens to folks who continue to sell without a license once we do have a licensed and regulated industry? We want to make it as easy as possible on law enforcement, and not make their job harder, and so, trying to make sure we can find pathways into entrepreneurship, pathways into treatment, pathways into the appropriate programs, rather than just continuing to criminalize this.
I'm part of the task force for the League of Minnesota Cities, and we had a meeting about that bill today, and the concerns were a lack of local control in any way whatsoever, that you would, the state would issue the licenses, and there would, the city could have as many licenses as people want to apply for, instead of kind of doing things like we do with alcohol. The other was enforcement for our public safety people, that there's no tax sharing with the cities. It's all, goes to the state, and then the state will actually do the enforcement, or at least the taking away of the license and that sort of thing. So, it leaves the city kind of helpless, if we have a rogue player out there that just goes, and we gotta hope that you guys have enough people that can... got to hope that you guys have enough people that can come take care of it. And those are things I urge you to kind of take a look at as you're going through these bills, because there were a lot of big cities on this today, and they all had those same concerns.
Yeah. And I'm really looking forward to a report from that particular committee once all the conversations have happened, because I think that will be a really collaborative and comprehensive look at what other people are thinking that they'd like. So, please send it to me via email. That would be the best option. And then, as we go to our state government committees, I'm encouraging city managers, mayors, city council folks, anybody who's impacted, to keep an eye on that and to consider testifying. Again, this is, this work is going to be best done when all Minnesotans step up and do this. We want to make sure that this is an industry that's by and for Minnesotans. We want to keep Big Pharma out. We want to keep Big Marijuana out. We have heard that from, you know, border to border, that people do not want to see this be something that people outside of Minnesota come here just to capitalize on while leaving Minnesotans and potential business owners here behind. So, I'm really excited to see that report. I honestly was, I'm excited that you guys had that meeting and looking forward to that. One thing I will say about local control is that when we look at states like California and Colorado, allowing cities to full-out prohibit cannabis in their cities has been excessively ineffective. It has kept the underground market alive and well, and again, makes law enforcement's job harder. So, I've had conversations with chiefs and city managers in neighboring cities in Colorado, for example, where one has it legal and one has prohibited it, and it has made their administration a lot harder. Also, with fire, you know, if one city allows a certain extraction process and one city doesn't, you know, they have to keep both types of, you know, materials and such and tools on hand, depending on which city they're responding to. So, I've been doing my research there and trying to make sure we can find local control options that are effective. And that's the most important part of the conversation that I think sometimes gets left out.
I think importantly, it's zoning and the city having the ability to actually cancel somebody's license if they're out of control, not wait a year for the state to do something about it.
And there is a plan to have an agency. I just want to put that out there, too. That's been, whether it's a board or an agency, has kind of been in conversation. I support there being an agency. The Board of Pharmacy, we have seen, has not had the resources to enforce the way that it is designed right now. And so, having an agency going forward would be most effective, because that agency could then regulate the medical, the edible, the drinkable, all of the things, and really be the experts on this. And in our research in other states, that's really the most effective model.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. Is there anything else? Yes, Senator Carlson?
I want to say, you know, adding to what Representative Hanson was saying, that we also need to make sure that we put as much effort into finding out what is a level of impairment, so that when someone appears impaired or is impaired, that we have a way to find out. You know, the problem is, is that the testing now is just whether you have it in your system or not, and that can last for a month. We also need to make sure that we give employers the rights that they have to bar use. The truckers are a big force right now. They hate it. They don't want this at all. And at this point, they're fighting strongly against it. So, it's, you know, we have to find a way to make sure that we have consensus from the different points, you know, law enforcement, employers, airline unions, you know, there's lots of things like that, that we need to make sure that we have looked at all of the possible negatives of this use and using it broadly. So, yeah, that's going to be important. And, you know, I know law enforcement is real concerned about that, that finding a level of impairment and also testing for that level is real critical.
That will help our police officers, because they know what happens when you're consuming alcohol. You don't know what to do when people are ingesting recreational marijuana. I was in a meeting that somebody said that the word recreational marijuana is not acceptable. It's, what's the word that you all like?
Sure. So, the community across Minnesota, as we had these conversations over the last five to six years, that we're using is this is an adult personal use industry. Just like alcohol, people can choose to responsibly or irresponsibly consume, but cannabis is not alcohol. And I think that's a very important point for us to make, is that impairment and things like that, those are conversations happening around the country. Minnesota is not unique in that. Truckers around the country have tried in other states to oppose this, and it still passes, and their industries have continued. And so, we have a great opportunity to learn from other states, because we're a little bit late to this conversation as it's changing around the country. But an adult personal use industry really highlights that this is adults making a decision for personal use. And it's not that it's just recreational. We heard from folks all over that this is a healing plant to many people, whether they have a medicinal card in Minnesota or not. The vast majority of people who use cannabis find it to be healing. And so, the idea of recreational makes it to them, as they've said, is that it sounds just like, it's just a fun thing to do, right? And that's not the goal of this, is to really highlight that this is saving people's lives, healing lives, and curing, for a lot of people, addiction to other substances, intractable pain, things like that. And so, it's not just recreational for a lot of people using this. This is a life-saving plant.
So, what's the age that one can purchase?
So, our current model is for a 21-plus industry.
Oh, 21-plus, okay.
Yeah.
So, if you're 16 and you need this adult substance, you need your parents to...
And you would be in a medical program theoretically, is that would be under the care of a provider who would determine if that is the appropriate medication for a condition. So, the medical program will remain, just to be very clear.
Yeah, because I was thinking, if it's medical, it'll go under that. But if it's, so don't use the word recreational.
And we always talk about this as cannabis, right? Because there are so many different types of cannabis, and using that word is what the, again, the community has asked me to continue to amplify, so that's what I do.
Okay. Yes?
Well, because I have an expert in the room, I want to ask you a question now, if you don't mind. I heard of a court case in Colorado where a gentleman had partook in some cannabis the night before, two nights before, went to work, and was killed on the job, and work comp denied his claim. Have you been talking to the insurance companies? I mean, it was still in his system.
Yeah.
Even though he wasn't impaired, and clearly what happened at his work was the cause of his death.
Sure.
Has Minnesota, have you been talking to the insurance companies, you know, about instances like that?
I personally haven't, but I think it's important to point out that there is no lethal dose of cannabis on record. Nobody has died of a cannabis overdose to knowledge. And so, to your point of that clearly he was not intoxicated, it was the accident at work, more than likely, we can say that. Insurance companies are going to be insurance companies. And so, should they come to me and have that conversation, I hope that we can have some legislation around that. Unfortunately, this is, this part of the conversation is still relatively new around the country, and the norms are still being established. And so, as we start to see some norms there, we may have to be pioneers in some of the senses or, and/or address them as they come up. A number of cases have gone to our Supreme Court and have been looked at on that, which is what prompted this year's change to our law as well. So, there is a bit of trial and error as we venture into this, but I am confident that we've got what it takes to have the conversations as they come up.
Thank you.
Well, I can't thank you enough for coming, and we really appreciate your work, appreciate you and your partnership with us in the past, and also looking forward to the future. So, thank you so much. Chief?
Yeah, thanks for your guys' responsiveness and interest in supporting us in all these issues. I know City Manager Lindberg sends his regrets. Unfortunately, he's out today, but appreciates all of your support and working with us and with Ann to get these important issues across the finish line for Burnsville. So, thanks for coming tonight, and feel free to reach out to us anytime. We're always available to help you with whatever it might be to get these items going.
Great, thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Members of the council and staff, we're going to take a break for about 30 minutes, and then we'll return.
Oh, of course.
Hello, everyone. We are reconvening the Burnsville Work Session. And the next item on the agenda is the fleet study overview. Our deputy city manager, Hugo McPhee, is presenting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Just waiting for the presentation to come up, and we'll be all set. Okay, so, the purpose of this presentation tonight is just informational. On behalf of Public Works staff and our fleet staff, I'll be presenting the results of a fleet management report we had done. That was about an 18-month process, and hopefully it demonstrates to the council satisfaction and curiosity that we've been trying to be very intentional and strategic on how we replace vehicles and the types of vehicles we replace existing fleet with. So, with that, we'll get started. So, the reason why we're doing the, a little bit of background for the project is, we've never had an official fleet study done or conducted by an outside neutral party. Staff, we're looking for ways to improve. And the duration of this project was from July 2021 until November 2022. We contracted with Mercury Inc., not the same Mercury Inc. who is doing the brand, brand work with the city. These folks are nationally recognized leader in fleet management, and the data collection tools that they use were specific to Burnsville, which included surveys, records, audit, site visits to our shop, and benchmarking to see where we're at as we did our preventive maintenance and other tasks associated with this. Additional purposes of the project were to analyze the existing fleet and assess current and future needs. As you know, we're completed an organizational analysis here in the last year, and we wanted to make sure that the fleet reflected the needs of the organization, not just in number of vehicles, but also in type of vehicles, and how long we should be hanging on to vehicles, those sorts of things. We also wanted to ensure that our purchases are planned and aligned with the CIP, the Fleet Equipment Fund, and strategic priorities set forth by the council in serving the needs of the community. Lastly, and I did touch on this, we wanted to make sure that we were strategic and intentional in how we build our fleet and that it reflects the organizational needs going on into the future. Some of the goals that we had when this project was started was to review the existing fleet programs and operations, identify shortcomings where they existed, recommend improvements to maintenance, particularly preventive maintenance, oil changes, brakes, tires, those sorts of basic types of improvements to maintenance, review the current vehicle replacement plan. That was very important. Recommend replacement cycles and timelines as part of this process. And then also to consider paradigm shifts in how vehicles are utilized, whether that's an increase in shared or pool vehicles. Perhaps there is advantage in certain take-home vehicles for infrastructure protection, EMS, first, life safety types of positions. What about leasing certain vehicles? Was there an advantage to refurbished vehicles or overhaul vehicles? What about, what's the adequate reserve for critical vehicles such as ambulances or fire trucks, those sorts of things? So, those are all things that we had the consultant look at and consider for us. Fleet management explained, essentially, we have three components to what constitutes fleet management. You have workload, which is what needs to be done, workforce, which is who is going to do it, and of course, workplace, where is the work going to take place? So, perhaps three pieces of the pie as you determine what kind of fleet and what size fleet best fits the needs of the community. This slide here is interesting. It shows how many vehicles we have. So, you might see the top number, 686 units, but that includes all designated vehicles, not necessarily the traditional rolling vehicle that you might think of. So, if you're thinking autos or pickup truck sedans, your typical car or truck, that would be 300 vehicles. The remaining are trailers and various implements and snow removal equipment and those sorts of things. The average year age of our fleet is just over eight years. According to this study specific to the city of Burnsville and our experience with our fleet and maintenance history, et cetera, the consultant recommends closer to a six-year average replacement schedule. Currently, most of our vehicles, when we start to replace them, are in the four to 14-year range. The 14 years are the heavy equipment, more of the dump trucks and the big rigs, the bigger equipment that we have. And the four will be more the sedans and police vehicles, those sorts of things. A key component of this study was what we call fleet right sizing or right sizing analysis. And with that, the consultant analyzed the fleet profile. Broad staff input was requested from each of our departments and department heads, the directors, and then ultimately evaluated the fleet needs and goals of each department through a process that is called Vehicle Allocation Methodology, Vehicle Allocation Methodology, or VAM. Essentially, what the VAM or Vehicle Allocation Methodology study consists of are two main things, utilization and criticality. Utilization simply is how many miles are driven, engine hours operated, how much fuel is used, how many trips you take, those sorts of things. How is that vehicle utilized in the performance of the job it needs to do for the city? Then the other component is criticality, which is the importance of an asset or the uniqueness of an asset to carry out a specific function, a nature of use, reliability, et cetera. So, it's a combination of both utilization and criticality when we determine a vehicle needs to stay in the fleet. Three categories, once this information is collected, that determine how long you should keep a vehicle would be justify. So, that category is for very low utilization and criticality. It's a potential candidate for removal from the fleet. So, if you have a vehicle, if I'm a director and I have a vehicle that falls into the justify category, that's one that I would need to justify why we need to hang on to it, because it's not used very often, and it doesn't hold a very important job overall. And you would need to essentially justify that, that it's needed to be hung on to. The second category is review. These results are borderline, and the director, in conjunction with our fleet manager, would review that again in 12 months, just to make sure that, do we really need to keep this vehicle? Or conversely, when that vehicle is due to be replaced, maybe that's one that is not replaced because we no longer need it. So, these are a couple of the categories that we're looking at. Then the last one, which frankly, the majority of our vehicles retain, they're highly utilized and are highly critical. They're required to meet the mission of the department, the division, or the agency. So, the vehicles you will tend to see in the justify or review categories are the ones that are older or have a higher maintenance need, or frankly, the needs of the organization have shifted, that we don't necessarily need that particular vehicle anymore. So, this is a...
Take a breath, Hugo.
This is a, sorry if I was along here.
You're doing good.
So, this is the graph, graphic representation that the consultant put together for us. And there's a couple of categories here that I think are important. So, if you see on the red column or the justify, there were 18 vehicles that... there were 18 vehicles that were called into question for the department has to justify, do we need this many, these many vehicles? Ultimately, after a discussion and more analysis, five of those vehicles were determined to be expendable, and the other 13 are going to be reevaluated in the next year. A second important column is the review in yellow there. So those vehicles there total 25 from this study, and they're going to be reviewing again in the coming year to see if they need to stay in the fleet or if they can be cycled out. So that's some additional potential savings. And then if we slide over to the second graph, which is just to the right, where it says eliminate or right type and pool. As noted, we're going to eliminate five vehicles. And you can see which departments those are from. But the right type, I think, is an interesting column. For example, if we can get by with, for example, a mini pickup, a smaller size pickup, instead of an F-250 or an F-350, you could save quite a bit of money in the purchase price and if it fits your needs. So of all the vehicles that were assessed, nine were determined to be better suited as a right type vehicle for future purchases as years go by. And then the last column, which I think is also important, are how many vehicles we could share among the different departments. So there were 11 vehicles there that we could pool. So the low-hanging fruit from this slide is there's about a $220,000 savings over the next five years simply by not replacing those five vehicles. I suspect that that number will increase in savings as more of the reviewed vehicles, as we come through this next year, get considered, and then again, pooling of vehicles. So initially, a $220,000 savings in the immediate next few years, but I suspect that number will grow as we continue to do this process. This was not a one-off process where, okay, it's a snapshot in time. We did the study, now we don't have to follow anything in this for the next 10 or 15 years. This is a new way of looking at how we're going to operate the fleet. So fleet sustainability. So from time to time, we'll get questions on, well, why don't we have more hybrid vehicles or more electric vehicles in our fleet? Especially for the heavy equipment vehicles, the large capacity, the dump trucks, the heavy equipment, there's limited capabilities and applications that are currently EV or electric vehicle options. Comparable EV vehicles are 10 to 30% higher in upfront cost, and you may not recoup that cost over the life of the vehicle. If you're going to cycle that vehicle out in 10 or 12 years, does it pay if it's going to take you 15 years or longer to recoup that cost? So those are some of the things that we also look at and consider. Alternative fuel sources such as natural gas or hybrid. Many of the police vehicles are hybrid vehicles, so we're moving in that direction. Natural gas, there's not a lot of infrastructure to help with that, so that could be an option. But we're just aware of other ways to provide fuel sources for the vehicles, keeping in mind our sustainability efforts, et cetera. The goal, intentionality in considering hybrid, plug-in, electric, and alternative fuel vehicles when replacing the fleet, if it makes sense for the purpose that that vehicle is designed for. In-house versus outsourcing maintenance needs was another area that the consultant looked at for us. So the types of vehicle servicing we do in-house tend to be preventive maintenance, fluid changes, brakes, tires, miscellaneous repairs, those sorts of things. Occasionally, large repairs, depending upon what the backlog is for existing repairs or vehicles that are down. And we utilize the fleet asset system, existing software metrics. That reminds us when vehicles are due for oil changes or when their brakes need to be changed, those types of things. Some of the functions that we outsource are specialty repairs or lengthy repairs that would take our staff weeks to repair. Maybe it's a lengthy transmission or engine overhaul that it just is more cost-effective to have that farmed off to local vendors, et cetera, service providers. We have talked about moving towards upfitting vehicles off grounds. Upfitting vehicles are typically for the law enforcement vehicles. So instead of having maintenance staff here within the city take out the cages and the lights and et cetera, is there a savings by having an outside vendor do that? And so we're checking the price on some of those options because if we can have that, if it's cost-neutral and if that can be done off grounds, now our staff can do other things with maintaining fleets and those sorts of things. So we're looking at that as well, just kind of a different lens that we're trying to make sure we're efficient and still providing the service for our internal customers, like the law enforcement officers, as well as saving money community-wise if we can. Ultimately, recommendations coming from this was develop a quality, a deeper quality assurance program, tracking, reporting on several key performance indicators, such as when you change oil, when do you change brakes, when do you change transmission fluids? And some of these things, these are all readily tangible software metrics that you can do in a fleet management program. Ideally, we're looking to increase preventive maintenance program compliance rate. So if you're due to change, have the oil changed at 5,000 miles, that staff who are driving those vehicles come in at 5,000 miles and it's not 7,000 or 8,000 because they're on days off and somebody else drives the vehicle or those sorts of things. So that was also a component of this study to make sure that we're doing what we need to be doing and being mindful as we manage our fleet. So this slide, I think, is interesting because this talks about how do we get to that six-year replacement cycle? So based on our specific data the consultant pulled together for us, so as you can see, the sloping curve with capital costs, your costs go down as you stretch that out over 10 or 12 years. And then you have your operating costs, which, again, not surprisingly, the longer you have a car, the more likely things are going to break and you run the risk of more significant repairs, those sorts of things. And then your total cost is the someplace in between when you factor in those variables. And specific to our experience, the recommendation is someplace around that six-year replacement cycle is where we should be to maximize, to reduce, maximize double negative, to reduce the likelihood of a catastrophic failure of some sort, whether it's transmission engine or those sorts of things. So and like I had mentioned the previous slide, we are at about 8.1 years versus the six years. So a little bit of work to focus on that. So here's a sampling of the different cities that have comparable plans as we do, or comparable fleet size. We have on the left chart 300 vehicles that we're looking at. And on the right chart, I know it's hard to see, $2 million is what our budget is for the fleet process, repairing, purchasing, et cetera. I apologize if that's kind of a smaller slide. But we are the fourth bar. If you're looking at the left graph, we're the fourth vertical blue bar. And same with on the right. But we're pretty much in line with what our neighboring communities are. We're not grossly above spending on our items. And I think that's a tribute to how well-maintained the vehicles are that we're able to get eight years out of them versus the recommended six. Not that that's not a goal we should be moving towards. So ultimately, why did we do this? What does it all mean? Why do we care? So the deliverables that we're hanging our future practices on are the low-hanging fruit I mentioned earlier, eliminating five vehicles, as noted. There's others that are in the hopper potentially, depending upon what we find out as we continue to go through this process in future years. Right sizing the fleet by both vehicle type and function, part of that vehicle allocation methodology exercise. Expand the use of metric software to make sure we're getting preventive maintenance done when cars need to be coming in. We're also looking at considering creative solutions appropriate. There might be other ways to do business that we're open to. Some of that might be limited, take-home on-call vehicles, some of that could be lease options. We're looking at all of these different things. Upfitting squads, for example, might be another area to potentially spend some money. Ultimately, a very important part of this study was to make sure that we're syncing our purchases of vehicles in the fleet to reflect the organizational analysis and the CIP so that we're planning accordingly, ordering vehicles when we have staff coming on, replacing vehicles accordingly. So just making sure we're not an island unto ourselves, irrespective of either strategic plans within the city, council mission envisioned, where we're headed, those sorts of things. So that might have been quick. I apologize if that was a lightning round. Sometimes I get going, so sorry for that. But any questions that either I or I know Ryan and Jeff are here as well? This is meant to be informational, really to demonstrate that we're doing the best practice with how we're managing things and that we will continue to do so.
Actually, my only comment is it's the first time that I've seen a comprehensive fleet study for the city. I don't think, I don't ever remember seeing a fleet study in the past. And this is the most comprehensive fleet study that we have. Now we understand what's in the inventory. We understand that you have a methodology to go through all of that. You know, when I take my vehicle into Toyota to get oil changed or to get, they give me a little sticker, and I think that's what the software you're working on, that says, you bring your car in at this mileage point and to get this and this repair. So it sticks up there and I can see it. So what I'm hearing you say is the same kind of methodology that the private sector uses when it's well, working with their customers. Like for me, I go in and they give me a sticker. And so, you know, if you take care of your car and what they're telling you, you know, it will, it'll run well. And for me, as I look at this, this is telling me that when police and fire are called out, they're not going to worry that their automobile is going to somehow malfunction on the way to a call. Because I said, they are overusing it and you don't have all of the information about the vehicle. And then there's a problem. And that's not what our citizens expect. Our citizens expect us to respond to calls and be there. And you can't have an excuse, oh, my fire truck broke down and I couldn't get to the fire to take it down. Or you're going to an incident in a neighborhood and you have to say, well, oh, my God, we have two squads that broke down on the way. So for me, this is the first time, and I like what you all are doing because it gives you a lot more information. It gives you information about the life cycle of our vehicles and all different kinds of vehicles that you're looking at. And so you have a complete inventory of our stock. It's not just the big rolling stock, but all of the accessories that go along with it.
Well, Madam Mayor, council members, I am just the messenger for this. The credit for the presentation or the work would be Ryan and Jeff and Eric Olson, who's our fleet manager. So it was their brainchild to get this started. So kudos to them for the help in preparing the presentation.
Very well done, Ryan and Jeff. Chief.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I would echo that. Public Works Director Ryan and Assistant Public Works Director Jeff and Eric, our fleet superintendent, as well as Hugo, did a lot of work. And as you can tell, it's an 18-month project to ensure the reliability and effectiveness of the fleet to accomplish our mission. Just as a reminder to the council, the fleet fund is one of our most challenged funds on the CIP side. And we've also seen a lot of changes in the past year. Costs of vehicles have gone up and delivery times have gone up. Anybody who's trying to buy a vehicle knows that it's not quick. And with specialty vehicles, that's not any better. So we've been working with finance, and I know CFO Rhodey will help us work through this as we look to get to those best practices on replacement. And I commend the fleet department to looking at best practices for our fleet maintenance as well. You know, they want to make sure that we all have the equipment we need to serve the community, and they do a great job of supporting us and making sure that we have the rolling stock to do that. So I think this was a great step to get us to a best practice model.
And so I remember, was it, whether it was one or two council meetings, we had to, you asked that we start the process for a new fire truck because it takes now 24 months?
Well, Madam Mayor, that was the last, and I just got news this afternoon. It's 36 months now. So the fire truck, I haven't even had a chance to talk to Ryan yet. We got a phone call this afternoon. It's another year delay, so.
Oh, dear. And we have vehicles that can function and...
And that's where the maintenance and preventive maintenance and shifting, you know, as much resources as we can on preventive maintenance. And as Deputy City Manager McPhee talked about, is maybe we outsource some of that upfitting so that we free up some of our internal mechanic times because they have a lot of passion for making sure our rolling stock's ready to go and making sure that we are keeping those things ready since we don't have a huge reserve of vehicles, right? We run a very efficient operation, which is great. But we are going to make sure that those things are ready to roll, whether it's police, fire, public works. You know, all of us depend on vehicles to get out in the community and manage our mission. And they're committed to making sure we have what we need all the time.
Any other comments? Yeah.
I'm just wondering if, you know, a six-year recommended replacement cycle, if that's a hard rule or if that's more of, you know, if that's when you maybe take a closer look? Because I would be willing to bet there's vehicles that are, you know, at six or seven or eight years that are still running just as good as they were on year one. So are we talking about just when that vehicle hits year six, we're just done with it? Or are we willing to look at it and say, well, this vehicle's, you know, still got some years left on it? And, you know, is that a hard six? Or are we just saying, like, on an average, that's kind of what we're looking at?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Workman, that's the target area. Some vehicles might go eight years, nine years without any issues. And so that's a reminder for the maintenance staff that to track, are you having anomalies with the transmission? Are you having other, you know, unusual repairs kind of thing? So it's really more of a soft rule. And would be probably also for the vehicles that aren't the emergency vehicles, I'd be reluctant to have the police vehicles, for example, stay six, seven, eight years. The criticality is more important than those people play sooner. But other vehicles, I think you certainly could do that. And so it's the goal.
And then, you know, when we toured Eagan City Hall, we were fortunate enough to talk with their chief. And he had talked about how they're just rolled out their first electric squad. And I'm wondering if that's something that we're looking at doing anytime in the near future, Chief?
I will say, we're always looking to the future. We're going to see what happens with Eagan.
Let them be the test.
Let them get out on the land.
I think one of the things that they're checking about is how that will be charged. And, you know, they haven't planned for that either, so something to think about. And I know there was some discussion in the fleet.
And Councilmember Workman, if I can just add to that, it's an infrastructure challenge, but it's also a financial challenge, right? We're already kind of constrained in the fleet budget. And, you know, those electric vehicles sometimes can be twice the cost if they're all electric. So somewhat of an efficiency currently because of the financial constraints on what we're looking for.
And I don't know all the data on, you know, gas prices versus upfront cost, if that's still as prevalent as it was maybe five or six years ago? How that's balanced out, but...
And we just heard Hugo say that they'll continue to review that because the cost, the upfront cost of the car, and then by the time that the car is no longer in useful service, did we make our money back?
Right.
Yeah. So I think those are all of the things you guys continue to look at, so.
Yeah, and I know you alluded to that. I just wanted to use Eagan as a reference point that, you know. And I assume we are keeping an eye on that. But is that, I wonder if that's going to be the way of police departments, if that's the future? You know, obviously, we're not getting into a lot of pursuits in Burnsville. But, you know, those electric vehicles can kind of go from 0 to 100 in about .3 seconds. know, those electric vehicles can kind of go from zero to 100 in about .3 seconds. So maybe fires.
I don't think she's worth looking for that.
State Patrol, maybe.
Yeah. Yeah. Ryan?
I think we're near two hybrid cruisers.
Yep.
So that's doubled our fuel economy. That wasn't great to begin with, but we literally have seen 100% improvement.
That's awesome. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions? Hugo, Ryan, Jeff, thank you so much. This is really well done. And at least, you know, when we have a question, you have, and you now have a methodology, you know, are you going to review a vehicle, you know, retain? What is the, what was the first one?
Justify.
Or justify, you know, justifying that it, if it's still necessary. And then you're gonna have a, a review of that in 12 months to really understand. And then you can decide on the retention. So I, I think your methodology gets to what the outcome is, and being very intentional about our fleet, the needs, and the cost. So we always say, what are we doing? For whom? And at what cost? So for whom is how we serve the community. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Hugo. I don't see any other questions. So the next item is the discussion on the opioid settlement funding and the options for community impact. And presenting this evening is our CFO Jenny Rhodey, and our fire chief, BJ Youngman, and our police chief, Tanya Schwartz. And I think Jenny, you're first off, right?
I'm first. Yep.
Okay.
It's a team sport.
That's right. That's right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Tonight, we will review some of the funding, where we are with funding and administration, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to the fire chief to kind of review the options, and, and hopefully get some feedback and direction from the council. First of all, Burnsville's total allocation is $1.1 million. We've received 30, almost $37,000 of that to date. We expect another approximately $186,000 before year end. So that totals almost $223,000 that we will have on hand as of the end of 2022.
So $1.1 that spans to 2038.
Yep. So the remaining installments will come in varying annual amounts from $39,000 to $66,000 through 2038. In terms of administration of those funds, they'll be set aside in a separate special revenue fund, as is required by the, by the MOA. Council does need to approve a resolution authorizing expenditures before we are allowed to spend any of that fun, the funding. And annual expenditure reporting is required. And then additionally, if we spend over $25,000 annually in any, on any one activity, we'll have, we will need to do additional outcomes reporting. One item that's not on the list, we aren't required to spend our annual allocation, so we can, you know, carry some of those funds over if we so choose, depending on how we choose to spend those funds. So I will turn it over to BJ.
All right. Thanks, Jenny. Mayor, council, we, staff came together, Chief Schwartz and I and our staff, as well as CFO Rhodey and the city manager, to kind of brainstorm what are some of the options here. And really, I think our staff did a really good job of coming up with three, three, three options to consider for the council, at least in the beginning here. Preventative EMS pilot program, some community outreach and education, and this additional social worker hours. So we'll kind of dive into each one a little bit here. So the first one is really preventative EMS. This is a different model. You might hear community paramedic. This is a little bit different than this. Really, we've seen the police department's behavioral health unit be very, very successful. And this would be about connecting a firefighter, paramedic to that behavioral health unit some, a few hours a week. Behavioral health unit sees some very complex medical patients with different medications, and it would be helpful to have a paramedic there. The other thing that i- is interesting is the, the kind of high utilizers in the police department are different than the high utilizers the fire department sees on the EMS side. So this would allow us to, to see another subset of the population that the police department currently isn't getting to with behavioral health. So we, we put a paramedic paired with the behavioral health unit, and they would, they would provide home visits, preventative visits. They would engage with some of our, our frequent users of the system. They'd allow them to outreach to specific populations that they, they find helpful or commonly using the system. And the other thing that we, we've done a little bit of it, but they're, they're very staff intensive, is, is determining individualized treatment plans. So we've got some, some specific patients in town that it's helpful to, for the paramedics to have a specific treatment plan for Mrs. Smith. This is what she responds to. Here's where she goes to the hospital. Here's someone you can call that connects with her, whether that's a family member, a therapist, whatever that might be. And those are very helpful in getting people to the right place and, and having successful outcomes. So, so that preventative EMS, we think, would be a great option to help enhance the, the services that behavioral health is already doing, and the success we're seeing in the community. The second option is really community outreach, and this would be between police, fire, and social services. And really, we'd analyze some of our data a little bit more, and work to maximize our impact in some of our subsets across the community where we see high utilizers, overdoses, things like that. And really target specific populations, try to maximize our impact. And there's a number of topics we can cover with these groups. I can tell you, we get anything from requests to, to help specific mental health patients, to people that just want to know, I'm worried about somebody, who do I call? How do I make an impact? How do I, how do I, you know, talk to that person? And they're worried about someone they care about, but they don't know where to turn to. So some general education as well. And then the last one really is either county or contractual social work hours, adding additional social workers. It's been challenging to get social workers through, through the county. They've, you know, the, you know, recruitment intention challenge, right? We're using social workers in a different way and using a lot more of them. So they're challenged to, to provide enough social workers across the county. And this isn't just specific to Dakota County, but we're seeing it in that industry. But we could use it for specific projects or targeted populations, and it can be scalable based on funding and needs. So, you know, we talk about social workers, but it could be a similar mental health professional, but we use social worker kind of in a generality. So those are kind of the three top ideas that staff came up with, that we thought would be good use of that money. They're individual projects, they're scalable. We were specific on the EMS one to make it a pilot, kind of like when behavioral health started. We didn't know where that would go, and they found their way. We kind of see the same thing on the EMS side. We don't necessarily know what the best impact, the best outcome will be, but we want, by doing a pilot, some flexibility in being able to navigate our way through that. So I turned to Chief Schwartz and see if she's got anything to add. I think we've talked quite a bit about this. So.
Excellent.
All right. So with that, I'll stand for any questions or, or thoughts on this. We, we would ideally like to get some direction from the council on where they would like us to start looking at spending money, if they're looking, if the council is apt to start spending some of the money that we've received.
When I look at this, and reading the background, and understanding how the state won this suit, and this is a good nexus to get at, all of that, that allowed us to win the suit with the opioid challenges that we have. I also like the fact that we will have a fire paramedic in with, with police. Because I'm sure that there are questions that a paramedic would ask in an incident, that police wouldn't know how to ask those questions, because it's out of their domain of specialty with regard to medication. And here's a, an example. I remember going out on, on, with, with fire paramedics, and twice we came across a gentleman that had insulin reaction. And then come to find out that this particular individual continuously does not take their incidents. So to the point that you made, where a, a plan can be put in place. So when we get a phone call about, from this address, we pretty well know what needs to happen, and very quickly can direct that, that resident to the services that they need. And then with behavioral health, when you walk into a situation, and there's people on medication, and you don't know what that medication is, paramedics would know the questions to ask with regard. And that would help out behavioral health in, in a lot of great ways. And then having a social worker, I know we're, we're burning out our one social worker, right? Do you have a, did you get another half?
Interviews are coming again here this week. So, yeah. It's a struggle, as Chief BJ mentioned. It's across the county, across the state, across everywhere. So not enough social workers, and the job has changed for social workers as they're embedding in, with police departments. And so it's a little bit of a challenge. But we do have an interview coming up this week. So hopefully we'll replenish back into getting someone.
And we, we get your emails, chief, on some of the challenges that behavioral health has out in the, in the field. But we're not, you know, we're not allowed to tell that story, because some of that is probably going before court or whatever. But this seems to me like the best use of those funds in addressing these issues that have to do with mental health. And of course, with, with the opioid challenge, because you're going to have all of that on an ongoing basis. So I don't know. Anybody else? Yeah? Kara?
So I, I do like, if you have a pilot program, my challenge to you in creating this program is much of what you have listed in the program, we're still focused on cleaning up after addiction has started and after it's become the mess. Yes, we have to do that. But if we do not start focusing on prevention and interventions before addiction starts, the, the mess keeps growing exponentially. And you're already stretched thin. We are going to be funding more first responders, primarily because we do have in these areas of mental health and addiction issues, and, you know, all, all the associated things that come with that. So like, that hockey stick is going to continue to climb if we're only focusing, and I shouldn't say only, primarily focusing on cleaning up that backend, rather than looking for ways we can intervene upstream and impact people's lives, especially families and children, before the addiction starts. So I like this program. I like some of the things that you've listed in it. My challenge to you, and it is a challenge, is what can we put into it? Because, you know, the, the city is like this nice little hub. We interact in people's lives, so many of our departments do. And it's not just EMS and police and, you know, so it's not just those services. Other areas of the city interact in people's lives and see what they're going through, how they live, all of those types of things. So how can we be that center hub as a city to start impacting people earlier? Help them earlier in that cycle? And look at partnering with nonprofits. Because if, if people have trauma and needs, how do we get them to those other nonprofits? How do we do that? How do we interact with our other governmental agencies, right? Which is part of what we're seeing in, in our behavioral health unit, right? So taking some of that approach and putting it into this, but the focus is on addiction, preventing addiction, impacting people's lives, you know, as you can start to see, they have risk factors, they're in a, in a traumatic situation, that type of thing. A real concern that I have is we have, we have small children going through things that adults can't even deal with. But so often, kids are just left to kind of fend for themselves, because they're so resilient. Well, they're not. They just, number one, don't have a way to verbalize a lot of times what's happening. And number two, just because a child is smiling, smiling and playing and that type of thing, doesn't mean that the trauma that they've suffered hasn't impacted them and isn't going to be impacting them long-term. So I, I would like to see, and do you understand, I'm not, I'm not asking for solutions tonight. I'm just saying, as you're looking at creating this pilot, if council agrees with creating this pilot, that we do look at those components, so that we can start to catch people upstream before they fall in the river, rather than how you guys are constantly just pulling people out of the river, over and over and over and over and over again, right? How do we get them before they fall in the river? We gotta go upstream on that. So, and I am, I am patient on that. We did hear that we do not need to spend this money each year or lose it. It can be banked. So we can take our time and really think this through. And by we, I don't mean me, of course. I just give you the hard work. But you can really think this through and know that we're not breathing down your neck to say, I want it, I want it, I want it, give me now, right? This is an opportunity for us that doesn't come around very often. And so my thought is, we take it. And we take it for everything it's worth. So that's just my thoughts on it.
I think they have that in the community outreach and education piece.
Not really.
Well, I know that when the chief, when they talk to us individually during our connect, our connecting sessions, and, and chiefs, you can speak to it, that working with, with partners, whether that's nonprofits and others, and doing the outreach and the education, we'll get at some of that. The other thing is that we have our resource officers in the high school, and they get some information also. The, the bad part about a lot of this too, is that we don't have resource officers in the middle school anymore, where we used to. And we used to get good information through that, to get at your point of identifying some of these challenges and the families in these challenges. So the only thing that we have is the resource officers in the high school. But maybe they're, in, in working with the school district and other partners, like our nonprofits, you can, you can get at that piece, because you're right. But the thing is, it's like any family system. Sometimes there's denial, and no matter what you try to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is very difficult. Yeah.
Yeah. But the thing is, it is, when you're dealing with mental health or behavioral health situations, it's an ongoing, laborious, and long process. So, yeah. Chief, did you want to elaborate on that, on the community outreach and education piece?
Madam Mayor and council, I think what, I'm hearing from Councilmember Schultz is really what we would call a community risk reduction model, right?
Yes.
And how do we, how do we analyze that?
Like the community paramedics that we tried to do at one time?
Yeah, kind of. Just on the EMS front. You know, I think lots of times, you think of the fire department, and you think of community risk, and we think about our multifamily dwellings and kitchen fires, and kind of the traditional stuff. This is really kind of a risk reduction model on the EMS side of things. And Mayor, I think you're correct. It's difficult when you get into the, to the adolescent population or the youth population to get any information, right? They're, they're more protective, as they should be. But there might be ways to, to offer some assistance when we're looking at a family, right?
Yes.
And that's where we can maybe impact them. So I, I think, I appreciate Councilmember Schultz's point of being patient, because I don't think it's going to be quick, right? And I think if we're gonna do it right, like, let's just slowly work our way into it, so we do it right, instead of just trying to kind of bullish our way through it. Because I don't think that's going to be sustainable. I don't think that's going to be sustainable and necessarily helpful. So I think there may be a path. I think there's going to be some learning along the way and there's probably opportunities and I, I can't even imagine what those would be at this point, but I do think there's, you know, if, if that's some of our focus, I think that's helpful input for us, so.
Councilmember Gustafson?
I, actually I like this preventative EMS pilot program. What I like about it is that we're going to get into the homes and do follow-up. And listening to Councilmember Schultz, what she's saying, that might actually give us an opportunity once we're in that home to observe what's going on with, as you said, the family and maybe identify some families that are in crisis. Not just the, the emergency we're dealing with, but the whole family might be in crisis and maybe help hook them up with services throughout the county, which the county has a lot of programs to, to work with people and there's a lot of groups out there that can do that. So I know it's not the only answer, but it could be a piece of the answer, because I think a lot of times with the addictions of that, a lot of times these kids are in tough homes that things are going on and it, it's what they see and so that's what they end up doing. So we can kind of, at least identify and catch it early and hopefully the family's open to getting help. As we all know, they don't always agree to that either and you can't just force them to put their kid in some sort of program either. But it'd give us that opportunity. But I, I agree, if there's a way, as you were talking, I'm going, how do you, how do you identify someone that's going to go into addiction before it happens? I mean, especially in, with our, with our public safety, because they're responding to the emergency that happened. So that, that's already happening with who they're dealing with and I, I'm not sure how you get to that point where you identify it. I think, I think again, it's, it's the schools, it's, it's families, it's, it's the educational part of it. If you, someone in your family is having problems, reach out to somebody and, but then how do you get them to do that? I mean, we did foster care for a long time and we had lots of kids and I tell you, lots of families stayed very silent on that and they just, things happen. Then they scratched their heads and wondered why, how their kids ended up in a foster care program somewhere. So it's, yeah, as they say, it takes a village.
Yeah. Well, and the other thing is that we all, we have not a lot of money.
No.
But I like what our staff has come up with in focusing on these three strategic directions. So, you know, and that's, that's all that we can do with what we have now until we begin to take a look and say, once we get into it, you know, how much more funding is going to be necessary, once we understand the brevity of, of the, you know, the expansion of all of that, what more does it need? Okay, yeah, Dan?
Chief, I like the, I like the concept. We've had a lot of machinations, I think all of us in our heads, since this whole opioid thing came up and that these funds were coming our way and, you know, what is the best and highest and most efficient use of them to, to get into preventative programs? What's the next step? Because this seems a lot of conceptual right now. So what do you see over the next timeline of what it will take, I guess, and the research that you're doing to be able to put together the actual plan, the executable plan? And are you doing some research around the country? I mean, drug intervention isn't a new thing. There's a gazillion pieces of studies and data and examples out there of how we get to that, to the long part of the stick instead of just reacting to the hockey stick, which, which unfortunately most, I think, most of the clinics and nonprofits out there, I mean, they're just dealing with the crisis after, after it happens and trying to get, get people to, you know, get off the drugs, get off the dependency and clean up, but that, there's not much they can do of stopping people from getting there. And I think that's the $64,000 question is how in the world do we crack that egg? And there's, I suppose, there's a lot of research you want to do, but kind of give me a sense of the timeline of the development of the plan.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question and I've looked to the folks in this other room if they have any expertise in this area, but really, we wanted to get the council's direction first. And if you wanted to go down the preventative EMS route, then we would look at, you know, that would fund some overtime of a fire medic to come in, you know, a few hours a week to, to help with the behavioral health unit. I can tell you from my experience, there's not a lot of research on the chem dep side of preventative EMS. I will tell you, the community paramedic model is focused on two things, one rural health and secondly, chronic health.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of research out there on this. I would say we would be breaking somewhat of a new ground the way that we are doing it, particularly partnering with the PD on the behavioral health side. So I don't know that there's a lot of research and that's why we called it a pilot, because I think it's going to be some trial and error. So I would see us finding out which of our fire medics are interested, working with our medical director, working with behavioral health to find out what do we, who do we want to target, right? What kind of check-ins do we want to do? What, what are the risk factors? What are the, what are the, what's the documentation we want? And then what are we going to do once we get that, right? So who are we referring to? I, I like Councilmember Schultz's idea of, of the hub and spoke, right? I think we, we have access and we know a lot of resources. How, how are we going to navigate them to some of them? So I, timeline wise, I would say at least three months to get that ball rolling, but we wanted to get some council direction before we put too much effort into going down that road if council was supportive of that. But I, like I said, I think it's a, it's a, it's really a crawl before we walk or run type of pilot. And, and really it's going to take a number of versions of us going through that, going to see some people and say, yep, that didn't work, right? I mean, it sounded great on paper, didn't cause a positive outcome, didn't, didn't make a positive impact. Or getting feedback from VHU like, yeah, we're not, that's not helpful, right? Or great, we found something that's worth gold and let's follow through on it, so.
So there's, in this plan, there's deliverables that you're looking at as, I don't, I hate to say return on investment in, in something like this, but the deliverables of what is the, what is the outcome going to be measured by?
And I think that might be a little intangible, to be quite honest. I can tell you a lot of the, the community paramedic programs have focused on two things and they failed on them, is one is they want to see a reduction in EMS calls. It's very difficult to keep people from calling EMS, right? If they need help, they're going to call. So if you reduce one frequent user, you end up funding another. So the models haven't seen a great reduction on their investment there. The other one is the, the chronic health patients are trying to keep from getting readmitted because they get fined for Medicare and Medicaid for readmissions, they don't get paid. So the, the hospitals have a financial incentive to keep them out of the hospital. I think our incentive is more, can we get them, can we get that patient thriving in the community? So it might not be as, as black and white as, did they not call? But those are some of the things that we need to figure out throughout it, right? And I don't know that we have the answer to that yet, but I would want some scale to somehow be able to measure whether we're successful or not, instead of just doing something and then saying, well, it's good enough, right? Must, must be working because we're showing up. Well, that, that's not a measuring stick. So I don't, I don't have anything preconceived on that, but I would just say it may not be as easy as saying, well, how many times they call 911?
Are you also sharing this with your peer group to see if there's others that want to work on a project like this? So you're not going it 100% alone, because I think right now, this is probably an innovation that others may not have thought about and maybe no one's ever done. Is there a way to get some additional people into the party in their own way, in their own cities, but to collaborate with you on what you learn and what they're learning?
They're getting opioid money too.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what they're going to choose to do.
I don't know what they're going to use it on, but yeah, maybe this.
So a couple of things on that. We haven't intentionally done that yet, again, waiting for some council direction.
Right.
A couple of things. One is we want a few that own their ambulance license, right?
Yeah.
So that narrows the pool pretty quickly to who is interested in the model that we are. The second thing is Dr. Andrew Stevens will be our medical director as of January 1st again. And as part of his group, we are getting Dr. Michael Wilcox, who has done a lot of community health in Scott County. So he brings a wealth of knowledge to us and can connect us and they're also doing medical direction for Edina and a few others. So that will naturally bring us some peers to work with and Assistant Chief Dwyer, I don't know if you've got anybody else to?
Yeah, I've had a few around the metro that have, have reached out and just asked what we've kind of, I've kind of talked conceptually about what, what we've been working with, particularly what they've been, what they've been doing with the behavioral health unit. And there's a lot of interest because they want to find out more. And I, I would say personally, I would be willing to work with anybody and everybody that has ideas of how to make this successful, right? Because we don't want to spin our wheels and waste time and a lot of your things like that. We want to be effective with it and, and make sure we do all we can. So I don't see us doing this alone, but I also see us doing this to what's going to be most beneficial for our community first, you know, and make that impact there. But, you know, working together, I think is going to be something that will, it will lead to, no point reinventing a wheel somewhere, find something that's working for them and something we can implement that's, that's good for us. But we have had some conversations, this is kind of very, very preliminary, but I definitely see that continuing, especially now that we're trying to move forward with it, so.
Yeah, when you get the, maybe more of the plan firmed up, sharing it with certain publications statewide or region-wide could get peak interest of others to want a model with, participate from a collaboration, but you could, you might, you might pick up some down the road, right? As, as everybody gets into some sort of program, they're all going to be learning in their own communities, different things from it. But I, I just always recognize the fact that we're not alone, we're not unique.
Right.
We are unique in the, the fiery MS, right? But we are a city like many, many other cities. And when we're innovating.
Except better.
Because we're better, because we're bold and we, we set trends and we are, we're not afraid to test new things and innovate, you know, in something like this, there may be other people that don't want to wait until, you know, a year or two and go, how did it go? We're thinking about it. They might want to try and move on something earlier, right? And then they can, they're basically more test cases for all of us to learn from, so.
And also being aware that mental health issues have been part of our society for a long time and it takes a while. So one of the things is how do you measure changes in behavior? And there are different methodologies of, of measuring that. And so, but in the work that you're trying to do with the EMS pilot program, I think it's taking a look and say, what were some of the things that, because paramedics and police are operating together? What did you reduce in terms of different incidents? And how did you help one another in all of that? So I think from what I'm hearing is that everyone is behind the EMS pilot program. And so you'll have to, then in the background, you said you'll come back with, with what that would look like.
So Madam Mayor, yeah, we would, we would need a resolution from the council to expend any funds, so we'd come back with a resolution and then we'll, we'll start working on kind of a plan to, to kick off the pilot and then be in frequent communication as we start to learn things. Again, like I said, we, we intentionally called this a pilot because we don't have any preconceived notions of, of how this is going to roll out and what's going to work best, so. But we, we definitely appreciate the support and we look forward to working, you know, arm in arm with behavioral health and, and all the partners to make this successful for Burnsville.
Yeah. Well, and Chief Financial Officer, Rhodey, you outlined how much money we have this year. So with that, with what the program is going to be, is what you will come back and if it's within what that is, that we can spend before the 31st.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I mean, we, we received a significant amount upfront. I don't anticipate us spending nearly that to start this, right? I think we want to start small scale and it's good that the money rolls year to year. So I would say, you know, we'll come back with a resolution to, to spend a portion of that money, a small portion of that money to, to start it. And then if we need to.
Of course.
Evaluate it and, and modify it as we go, we can come back to you and, and talk with you about, you know, where, where we see the vision of that program and get your, your feedback on that, so.
I think it's worth saying, under no circumstances, I think Councilmember Schultz put this on the timeline, but also we're not expecting miracles. This is a pilot, this is a test, it has not been done before. And so it's going to be a learning process and, and the first report or the first expenses, maybe just setup and trial and error. A lot of it's going to be trial and error. So I, I certainly want to say, go forward, but I don't have any preconceived notion that I expect some sort of, you know, deliverable numbers in return on investment for a while. It's just going to take a while to, to really build it and mature and evolve and improve to be able to get those results that ultimately we want, but.
Yeah, because all of us have experience and know people who have gone into mental health clinics and trying to work through issues. And it takes time. It's not easy. And so that's what we need to do. So on a policy level, it's adopting the EMS pilot program.
Madam Mayor, I will come back to you with a resolution to, to adopt that. I'm hearing consensus on that.
Yeah.
And we'll move forward.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I appreciate the support and appreciate the PD and behavioral health bringing that to us and being, you know, willing to work with us on this. And I think it'll be a great opportunity to, to advance the cause in Burnsville, so.
When it just makes a whole lot of sense.
Doing this, that's important.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have.
We have an advantage that most other cities do not have, so we might as well press that advantage as, as far as that will go for us and for our residents.
Yeah. So from a policy perspective, EMS pilot on an operation side?
We'll work on a plan.
That's right. And that's yours and the execution of the plan, the plan and the execution is operations. Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, we're moving forward then. And thank you so much. I mean, that partnership between police and, and, and fire paramedics is just unbelievable. It's, it's the best. The next item is the Discuss the Park Dedication Funds that's received from BSL and it's related to the landfill expansion. And presenting is Ryan Peterson, our Public Works Director, and Garrett Beck, our Parks and Recreation and Facilities Director. Are you up first, Ryan?
I am.
Okay.
And Jenny gets the honor to present one slide as we get into it as well. So what we're going to do is just go through the landfill expansion, how we got some funding from, from the expansion for park dedication, what some of our priorities may be according to our parks master plan, some opportunities, some ideas that we've come up that would fit into the master plan well. And then what really what we're looking for is direction tonight on how the council would like to us to investigate to best serve the residents with the use of this money that we were not expecting to, to come in. So that's what we're going to be looking for.
We, we do have a policy on, on, on park dedication fees, don't we?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. So landfill expansion. As you all know, the approval of the BSLI landfill was, was done. The previous approval showed a golf course that would be constructed up there. When we expand the landfill, that will not be an option due to all the grades and for other reasons, but the golf course will not be there. So a loss of a recreational opportunity occurred. Due to that, the staff requested that Waste Management provide a park dedication allotment to the city. They agreed to do that for this, that reason. We utilized the formula that we would always do for these types of things. And we, so we used the area of revenue collection at the landfill, multiplied it by the appropriate rate, and that turns out to be a $1.9 million park dedication that was given to the city for expansion of the park system. And that usage is not determined in the capital plan at this time. So we're looking for direction on the best way to do that. So what is eligible expenses and what aren't? It's meant for enhancement and expansion. You cannot use it for renovations. So we can't resurface trails, we can't replace a playground with another playground the same size, that kind of thing. This is for expansion of the system. So with that, the staff came together and I thought, what types of things should we, could we recommend to the city council to consider? And the document that we looked at primarily was our park master plan, which was updated in 2017. Garrett was instrumental in the architect, architect of, on the city's perspective of making sure that that got done according to what the residents and the users of the park would want to see. So this is a screenshot out of the park plan, the park master plan, and you can sit there. The question was, how does your family use the parks? So the heat index, the red would be the most, and then as you get down to the light gray, that would be the least. So the largest is the health and wellness, which would be walking, mountain biking, hiking, swimming, that sort of thing. And then the second, free play, playgrounds and the beach, then specialty parks such as El Magnet, Splash Pad, Burnhamwood Golf Course, that kind of thing, those specialty parks. And then finally events, but that doesn't necessarily. And then finally events, but that doesn't necessarily fit into what you would do for an expansion of a park. So once again, the, what, in the next year, what facilities, areas are you likely to use or enjoy? So that was a question that was asked. And trails was by far the highest there at 63%. The next one, AM Center at 44% was shown on down to conventional play areas, Crystal Lake Beach, Splash Pads. Those were the top five, with trails being the, the largest. The screenshot on the bottom there indicates that Burnsville is, does not overly trail, let's put it that way. The city of Eagan has 161 miles of trails, Burnsville has 57. So that's 2.44 miles or trail miles per thousand residents where we're at .93. Now, we've got to remember Dakota County, they don't, they don't necessarily have the freeways that we do. They have county roads. And on those county roads, there are trails on both sides. So these are not, this is not a direct comparison, not a direct comparison of recreational trails, but there are more walking opportunities there, biking, that sort of thing. Lakeville has 118 miles. So just pointing out, the number one response was that, and then we do not have as many trails as some of our neighbors.
So did you look at the, so Burnsville is 27 square miles and Eagan is what, 37 square miles? If you're.
This is purely a screenshot of the plan that, that shows.
What I'm saying is that we need to look at apples to apples when you're looking at miles of trails.
Yeah. We, we're looking at how many miles of trails there are per resident is, is what this table provided us.
Okay.
So if you are interested in trails, a couple of ideas would be, the Lake Marion Trail is, is not done yet in town. Burnsville Parkway Bridge, so in 2025, Burnsville Parkway Bridge along with 13 and Cliff Road will all be replaced. One of the things we're likely going to want to do is widen out that bridge there so that we can put a trail. Right now, it's like six or seven feet wide. We'd like to definitely make that 10 to 12 feet, so that'll be more conducive to all kinds of modes. So that is one option to, for the council to consider. There are also other trails that would be of a potential option. So this is just one opportunity. There are others. So park renovation and expansion, Kelleher Park, Garrett's been working very hard on putting together a plan for a park in the southwest part of town, a part that, town that is, does not have good park facilities. This shows a, would be a wonderful building that could be put down there, well, it's something we don't have currently. It also is more than just a building. The whole park, if you've been out there, the Ball Diamond is in, not in good shape and that sort of thing. So this would be a whole renovation. We already have some funding ready for this, but it is not the.
Not enough.
It's, it's just not in good shape, so.
Wasn't it last year that after walking down the, the boardwalk, the Lake Marion Boardwalk, going over to Kelleher Park from, that we realized in talking to the people, and, and we should be doing something with Kelleher Park? That area, Mobile Home Park, has been a place where we have neglected and we have failed, I believe, the residents of that area. And Garrett, didn't you come back to us and say that you were going to renovate Kelleher Park?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, I do remember that walk and, and our conversations.
With the residents.
Yeah. You know, one of the visions from a previous park director was about creating gemstone parks throughout our community that would be unique and destination type experiences. That's how we came up with Nicola Commons Park, across town west. And, and as I, as I look at this quadrant of town and our park system, as Ryan indicated, there isn't really a lot of recreational opportunities for folks over here. We have Rose Park, which is a soccer complex basically, and we do not own that land.
No.
We have spent some time, I personally have visited the mobile home locations and talked to the residents. We did some engagement down there to hear more about what's going on in their neighborhood, what they would be interested in. I've worked with our police department because we do have challenges down in that area. And so it took all of that information to try to, again, it's a chicken and egg situation, right? We can't provide counsel with things to consider without doing some research and, and background. So what you see on the screen right there is kind of a rendering of what could be the potential of a trailhead, a large picnic shelter, which our master plan calls for, which would greatly improve the, the location down there at Kelleher Park, give that neighborhood something they could be proud of, that they would use. And it would bring people to the area, which would help with safety and, and all those kinds of things, right? So again, it, the research and the, and the engagement and things need to happen before a plan can be put for consideration. So yes, long story short, that is, that's, that's what this was about, yes.
Because I was embarrassed and, and it felt very bad that we neglected that area of town. Why? Because they were our mobile home park. And they don't, they don't have a voice to come in and say, we want this, where other areas would, other areas of town would do that. And this is in the plan, in your, in your parks plan?
This, I have worked with a consultant to create a master plan for this specific park, and there are a number of things specifically that the, I asked the consultant to consider through engagement and the details of our park and rec system master plan, those components come out in this design. So there's nothing in the master plan that says, put these exact features at Kelleher Park, but you, you look at what the.
But you're going to renovate it.
Exactly, yes.
You're not going to leave it the way it is.
100%.
And people have not gone down to take a look at it. You would feel awful, awful.
I agree 100% Madam Mayor.
Wasn't there also a plan to partner with the county down there on something?
Yes, Councilmember Workman, again, as part of the discussions in our, in the work that Ryan and I did with the county on the Lake Marion Trail, they, once that trail is constructed, they do the maintenance on it. So I had some engagement with them on if they would like to have a small storage area so that they could drive up, access their equipment, plow the trail, come back, drop it off, and then also help us, they would help, if it's a trailhead with restrooms and things like that, they will help fund a portion of the building, they will pay for that space. They're very much interested, in fact, have, you know, committed to something like that if we are eventually able to commit to doing something like that. So again, chicken and egg type stuff, but we have these conversations to find out what the potentials are and then ultimately have these types of discussions to figure out the best way forward.
Yeah.
Garrett, I, I like the Kelleher Park idea myself as well, but I do have a question. We have a master plan for our parks and we must have prioritized over the next two, three years, what we want to do each year in those parks to get things done, to upgrade the different parks we want, or what we want to do? Do we have a plan like that in place? Where the, we have them in priority that we want to get this one done this year and next year we want to get this one done?
Councilmember Gustafson, the 2017 Park and Rec System Master Plan has 10 components in the frameworks. And it is, it is, it identifies what needs are and what possible solutions are to accomplish those needs. It, it does not specifically go into the detail of your number one trail or, your number one need is a trail that connects this spot to this spot. So that really comes down to staff and, and council and the, in the community having further discussion about, okay, we know this is a need, where's the best place to, to, you know, pickleball, for example, is clearly called out in the, in the Park and Rec System Master Plan. You can only put pickleball courts these days in certain locations and it would only be appropriate to put them in so, certain parks because of parking and noise and all those kinds of things. So it doesn't go into that specifics of number one thing you need to do is put in a pickleball court and it should happen at this particular park.
So we don't have a plan for like 2023, what we're going to do in our parks yet?
Our plan is through our park CIP.
Okay. Maybe I should have mentioned the CIP then instead.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So you have a prior, priority on the CIP and what years you're going to be doing certain things?
We do. I, I mean, there are certain things that are renovation based and certain things that are enhancement based that could be used for the types of dollars that we're talking about here this evening. Sometimes emergencies pop up like did at Nicola Commons Park, and that throws your park CIP out the window for a few years. So that becomes the priority because of an unforeseen situation.
I get the emergency part, but I'm just saying, we're getting one-time money and we've got a CIP of things we want to do in our parks. Isn't now a good time to just look at that CIP and look at the priorities of what we thought that was going to be and start funding some of those, just getting those done?
Councilmember Gustafson, I, I think that is a possibility, but I think that's why we're here tonight, this evening too, and to discuss that. I mean, for example, Kelleher Park is a placeholder out there.
Yep.
That is partially funded, but not completely funded, nor is it completely, I, I do not expect it to be completely committed to because we're learning things and having engagements along the way that are, and of course, prices have increased and all kinds of things, right? So I, I think that's part of tonight's discussion too.
Dan, Kate?
Who did we survey? What is the demographic makeup of the survey respondents? Do we know?
The survey for?
Are you talking about the parks master plan?
The poll that Ryan shared with us, that's a survey of residents?
Yeah.
Your community engagement.
Councilmember Keely, the, the details of, the Park and Rec System Master Plan from 2017 is online and.
That's where that came from?
Yeah. And the engagement information and whatnot is all listed on there on who participated, all the different ways they went about trying to collect it, things like that, so.
Can you reference, I didn't get into the, I did start flipping through that plan, but it's five years old and there was a pandemic, so I, I'm, and it, it was done for the first time since 2000 is noted in it, so we, we went 17 years on, on the old one. So five years is pretty young, I guess, as park plans go. But I'm just curious, what was the demographic makeup of who responded to that poll? Do we have any idea?
Councilmember Keely, I would, I could probably page through and try to find an answer this evening, or we could get that to you at a future time.
But part of my question is, how much of our diverse population, which is basically 40%, 62% in the school district, participated in a 2017 parks inquiry or survey, you know, that, that gave us that data? And are all the voices represented, right? I mean, I know we have a tremendous amount of folks, diverse folks that are in our rental units, they may or may not participate in it. We see, based on, really, our lens into the future is right in our backyard. It's called ISD 191. And what, one piece of that that I learned over the last year that I was completely oblivious of, is that our 62% diverse ISD 199 student population is not enrolling in traditional sports, basketball, football, hockey, baseball, they, and soccer. They are coming from countries where there is only one sport that matters. And it's going on in Fox 9 TV and has been for the last couple of weeks. It's, it's soccer.
It's been really good to.
Yeah, except for the United States.
Croatia lost today though.
And so, and what I didn't realize too is, they don't necessarily play on full-sized fields. I learned that, the term footsault, which I was never familiar with before, and I learned that 90% of the participants in our local owned, I Got Skills Soccer Club, 90% are diverse. And so, and I also learned that they were struggling to try and, you know, get on our fields, different issue altogether. But ultimately, what they do is take our fields and turn them into smaller fields, these football type of small fields where the focus is on ball handling skills against the defender, not running across what seems like a football field back and forth, right? Where it's just kicking the ball and running full speed. And then there's a little football skills trying to get it in. And then you do the same thing going the other way, back and forth. It's in a much more confined facility, fences, et cetera, goals. So it's, I call it, you know, it's like tiny homes, it's like tiny courses or, or, or courts. And these football, these footsault soccer complexes are starting to pop up all over the country in cities who are trying to meet the needs of their diverse population who doesn't want to play football or baseball or, or hockey or basketball. They, they want to, they want to play soccer and they want to play the kind of soccer that they are playing. And that's not the same as what my kids participated in, which was full-sized fields, traditional. So as this is ballooning and growing like crazy, the traditional soccer demand has been shrinking since my kids were in it. And that is, Burnsville Fire and Valley United used to be two completely separate clubs. They are now joined together. Why? A lack of participation. They've been struggling with shrinking participation levels, even 20 years ago almost, when I was involved in it with my two daughters. So it's been a constant shrinking. And then you have this, this diverse group that are looking for fields, smaller fields, and looking for facilities to play in. And we really don't have anything. So I, I think there's a missing piece of what we're dealing with, and this was my biggest fear about working with one-time money, is we are using an old model and an old plan and just funding the same old thing, but we are not the same old city. And it, and it, I, obviously, as you all know, Mayor, Madam Mayor and the other council members, I, I went through a tremendous learning experience working with the Burnsville Festival because I engaged with our community as a whole, everybody in our community. And that was one of the things that came out, was like, well, I had no idea we had that going on and I had no idea that the demand was so high and, and that they were struggling to find places to play and et cetera. And, and that that was really where the growth is. If you want to find out which club is growing, it's that. And which ones are shrinking is the traditional soccer clubs. And that's just one piece, but that's something that isn't identified in any of these plans. It's not even mentioned. And yet, how, how big of a percent does our population need to get? How big of a percent of diversity does our school district need to get before we as a city start thinking about, what is the facilities and parks that they need?
Yeah.
That they're looking for?
Yeah.
Instead of, well, let's just refinish this, or let's make this, and let's do another dog park, and let's do another tennis court or whatever. I mean, that, that seems like, we got to stop, and it's not like we need a whole new facilities plan. I just think we need to do, approach the survey and approach getting the data in a different way so we can hear from everybody and where the need really is. And obviously, we have one. The other one that I'm concerned about is, I haven't seen anything in here about accessibility. Who is speaking on behalf of the unable community? We have one park and we're all cheering, this is great, we have an accessible park. We have one. So everybody in Burnsville has to drive, has to get in their car and drive across town to the one park where their unable kids can play alongside their able kids and their friends. In that park, I've been to it and I've been to some other ones, and I'm finding that there's a lot of great playground equipment that every able-bodied child can have just as much fun as the unable who can then play on it, because it's accessible. The, the easiest example I can state is a merry-go-round. Merry-go-rouds don't have to be a foot and a half off the ground. They can be flush with the ground. Therefore, the wheelchair or the child in crutches or the family member in crutches or wheelchair can wheel right on and play right alongside their able-bodied friends. To me, that's where we need to look for one-time money spending, is modernizing our facilities to include everybody in the community instead of just going, well, if you're able-bodied, we got all kinds. you're able-bodied, we got all kinds of stuff for you. And we'll just keep throwing more money into it. But if you're unable, sorry, we got one place. Or if you're looking for a footsall soccer facility, sorry, we'll maybe work you into a field and you can kind of create your own thing. Yet that's where the growth is or the demand and the need is, and we're not putting any emphasis on that. So to me, for this one-time money that we weren't expecting, which is on top of millions of dollars that we've been collecting thanks to the reduction of the apartment complex, or the no apartment rule, of the elimination of it, not reduction of it, the long plight, look at the, look what it's doing to the Parks Capital Fund. I mean, when Jenny sent that out, that was zero to 82,000 in the five years prior to the last five years. That was exactly what I expected to see, but didn't realize it was that dramatic. From under 100,000 a year for five years to hitting 4 million thanks to Waste Management's donation to the Park Capital Fund. So.
And the Haley Ramey.
And the Haley Ramey was huge.
Huge.
Add all three of those together and it was big.
2.3 million came out of Haley.
Exactly. That was the biggest as far as a single developer project encompassing.
And then you have MWF at 1.5.
Yeah. So we have this great infusion in the Parks Capital Fund. We do have some things, like years ago, we went on that tour and we saw we had a rotted building at one of our, those, those are things that we need to address. But I really want to, I hope the council will open its mind up.
Yeah.
And put aside this, wow, this is our capital fund. And I, no disrespect to end, I was with you too. I would have said the same thing. Well, haven't we prioritized what we need? Let's go through the priorit list, maybe reevaluate it and put it to that. But we have this opportunity.
Yeah.
With this 1.9 million and maybe some of the other money, I don't know. But to actually do something visibly and effectively and change and deviate from this, in my opinion, now outdated plan that probably didn't survey everybody that should have surveyed, because we don't control that, right? We don't try and make sure. We just throw it out there and whoever responds, that's what we have to work with, right? So no slam to staff. It is what it is. We now know enough by the census, by the pandemic, by the experiences, right, that there's more we can do to the rest. So we, we are providing park facilities for everybody and not just, well, if you play basketball or tennis or pickleball or soccer, the traditional soccer, you know, or want to walk your dog or whatever, or get on a bike trail, yeah, we'll just keep doing more of those. It's not that we don't have enough of those. I get your point about the miles per capita. It's the, it's the rest of the population that is not represented in any of this plan.
That's right.
And so I'm advocating for two things, a footsall facility to be funded, and they're not even, they're not million dollars. I mean, we can do one, they're a couple hundred thousand dollars. That would be huge. We would be one of the few in the state of Minnesota. We would draw tournaments from all over the place. It would be like what Alley Magnet is, you know, when we draw all those tournaments and stuff and, and the other facility, Lac Le Ban, where we pull tournaments from the whole regional area. We could do that with a footsall soccer complex because we're not the only diverse town in South Metro or even in the metro. I mean, right? So we're not the only ones. And I believe we need to look at how we can, we can't maybe outfit every park with recreational equipment for the accessible, but we can certainly pick some parks around the city so families can, you know, don't have to drive all the way across town from, from Southern Burnsville all the way up to Red Oak, just to be able to have their kids play, you know, able, unable kids play next to able kids. So that's the two things that I believe we should use this money for. And we certainly aren't short on park dedication. Thanks to all of those apartment developments, there's a lot more money infused. So this 1.9 could in fact stand alone for something like this without really taking away from, you know, if we didn't have all that development, this 1.9 would stick out as a standalone and we'd be pressed to try and fund things that we need. But it isn't. We do have other park dedication fee money coming in, substantial money. So this really could go to something like that.
Yeah. And I agree with you because the thing is, after doing that tour and, and taking that walk, and then really getting into our mobile home parks, Rambush and Kamla? Is it Chilga or Kamla?
Kamala Acres.
Arbor Vista.
Arbor Vista and Ram.
And Rambush. You want to talk about where our, our diverse population is? And do they have voice? No. And when you talk about where we're doing the surveys and all of that, it's our regular folks who come to all of the festivals and the things that are, that they come to.
Right.
But the folks who are new residents and who are continuously, we say we're welcoming to all, but we don't have the facilities. You talk about, we have one adaptive park. Have you seen Egan's Adaptive Park? When you compare it to ours?
There's pretty impressive.
Egan's has a really nice adaptive park.
Yeah, it's really nice. Yeah.
Bigger.
We can do more.
So the thing is, when you're looking at that new model of football, those.
Futsal? Yeah, footsall soccer. They're complexes that are smaller fields.
Smaller fields.
FUTSAL, footsall.
FUTSAL?
Uh huh. I did.
And I think there's room for one of those things down at Kelleher. Because there was, there was a, there was a ball diamond that was, nobody used it because why? We didn't take care of it. Yeah.
Madam Mayor, if I may, a couple things.
Look at that. Look at all that open space.
There's more to the presentation, which will touch on some of the things that Councilmember Keeley talked about. In fact, our master plan does talk about how wood chips are not a desirable feature at playgrounds. And one of my, you know, again, I talk about quadrants of the city. We have one all-inclusive playground right now. And it is a goal of mine, before I retire, that we have one at least in each quadrant. And then there's also ways to do partial port-in-place materials so that, you know, there's pathways to everything, but you know, so you can save some money, but also accomplish different things that way too. But that's coming up in the plan. As far as footsall is concerned, you know, again, in the exploration piece, this is a park, but it is also a conservatory. So there would be, depending on what was put in there, there's also a flood plain that goes through there. So we are limited in what we can do. I did have some conversations with the gentleman who owns.
Jason Pocken?
Yeah, with Jason about, you know, I think of our skate park, right? That got started by a group of people who, at the time, skateboarders were not considered the, the most favorite people in the community, right? But someone cared about them, came to the city, we found property for them. They did fundraising. They did, like, we have examples of whether it's sports-related or unique things of either working with specific user groups and/or working with our service agencies and whatnot in the community to try to figure out how to do some of these things. But long story short, this was a place that I said to Jason, hey, it might be really cool if we could fit something like that in here. Cause he mentioned that they are trying to raise funds and do something like that. And at the same time, like I said, there, there's more that Ryan might want to present as far as the different playgrounds and things like that too. So.
Looks like they have one at Egan.
A footsall tournament, soccer?
Football court, club and court and everything.
Is it next to their accessible?
It's on Cedarstone Drive in Egan.
Yeah.
You think it's part of that new complex that they, where they put the accessible?
Jason leases warehouse space, puts all the stuff inside the warehouse. Cause we did that, August did the, his program last year. But it's a warehouse and he's got all the turf and stuff down there.
Yeah.
Right.
My granddaughter in Orange County plays in one of those.
It's one, his kids are insanely good at soccer.
And that's good, good to have an indoor facility in the winter months, right? They can run year round like he does. There's a, I don't know if this is going to get picked up, but it's.
Where is that? Where is that located, Dan?
He sent, this is an example park. I don't know the city, but I did see a list of 50, 60 of these all over the country. I was looking through, actually almost a year ago, I was looking through all kinds of different cities' parks that had these footsall, footsall soccer complexes, which basically it's fenced in fields, right, that are just smaller with goals and that. And you get a lot of them in a small area because they're not large themselves, individually, they're not that large.
It's a lot about skills, training.
Yep. And, and so, you know, I, I just think this is something I would like to see us invest the money in.
Me too. And I'd like to see that start at Kelleher Park.
I'm thrilled that we have all this other park dedication fee money coming in because of our developments that can feed our, our other needs for park capital.
Yeah. And we should start taking a look from a policy level, from the need perspective, looking at our new residents and what they.
Absolutely. They're growing every 10 years by a lot. And the school district is, like I said, a peak into the future. It's 62% diverse and that's getting bigger and bigger. And we have to change our mindset on how our parks are set up and what facilities are there for the demand. And it's, and we're really, we're balancing because we have two. We have folks that have been here for 30 or 40 years that want to use parks and they want amenities. And we have our new residents who are growing very quickly, who want to use our parks and amenities. And we need to figure out a way to do both.
Think we should do a new survey then?
Yeah, I do. Because I think we need to structure the survey in a way that we make sure that we get everybody.
Maybe a new survey is warranted. I mean, we do, there's funds to actually do a survey.
And to, you know, we now have Ava, Eva, Eva. And, and you know, you can get into our mobile home parks and areas where we have apartment buildings that are, there's quite a few of them. And these are where our new residents are staying because that's what they can afford at this time.
I mean, it'd be great to have a facility in Burnsville where we could host tournaments where people would come from all around, much like they do. I mean, when they, when we do host the Burnsville, I don't know what they call that tournament now. It used to be the Fire Tournament, but maybe it's Fire United Tournament. I mean, there's teams that come from other states that drive up to come to that tournament.
It was, Garrett, you know, we get teams from all over the United States and Hawaii. They come, it's the 12, 13-year-old. What is that?
That, I believe that ended back in 2012, but that was the
I know because I used to volunteer.
National Baseball Tournament. And it was put on by the Minnesota Youth Athletic Service.
And I used, and Burnsville was one of the locations where they used to love to come. Now we don't have them anymore. Cause I know I used to volunteer at those tournaments.
Put a bar out there.
But no, I agree with you. And perhaps a different way of survey. And Ryan, I know you have a couple more slides that you need to do, but I think from the gist of the discussion, yeah, trails are good, but boy, there's a lot more need.
Glad you asked us. Yeah, yeah. What I was proposing to do was.
I know you were focusing on your trails.
This is not Ryan's, this is what the plan was saying. So I wanted to make sure that you had the information there. So by all means, if this is going a different direction, that is what we are going to do. We do have post-pandemic or towards the end, we do have a good model if we do want to reach out. When we did the multimodal plan, we were out and about in different areas trying to get, because we knew multimodal wasn't the same old folks. So we definitely had a good model there to go with. And I, I mean, Garrett and I could work very hard together if that's what we want to do to make sure that we're hitting all audiences if we're uncomfortable with what this says, which is what I'm hearing today. So similar to Kelleher Park, if we're interested in a similar thing, Crystal Beach Park, you could make that more interregional. We do have a site plan similar to this and we're planning on replacing the playground there. And maybe we want to turn that into something like truly unique. So that would be a different opportunity. A dog park expansion that was listed in, in the past plan as being something that residents and users like a lot. So this gets right into what you said, Councilmember Keeley. We had the same thoughts. Garrett already explained it nicely. It sounds like we're on the same page, or at least our thinking was similar to what you were saying, to get an inclusive playground in every quadrant of the city, how important that could be for those folks. Another thing is, you go to Cliffend Park, right now you're still at Biffy's and to wash your hands, that's what you're doing. So there's about three or four parks that could really benefit from a permanent restroom installations as well. So that would be something to consider. So we just took, I'm going to skip this one based upon what I heard today. I don't think it's worth going through it because it was based more on what was there in the past. I, I can't explain why in this, that this slide was blacked out, but it was there. It was there from the beginning. I had it set for Jenny, but it was, so Jenny can talk a little bit more about the park fund and what's in there. So I'll turn it over to Jenny at this point.
Yep. As part of this discussion, we thought it would be good to just review where the park five-year finance plan is. Some kind of key information as you kind of, as you look at the financial position there is, we've just assumed a placeholder for the 1.9 million dollars. So in 2023, in terms of funding sources and expenditures, one of those reasons why that is high and why you see that quick spend down of that, of the park dedication fund balance, kind of that dark gray, is really, we just wanted to put a placeholder out there. It's not identified as any specific project. And certainly we could spend that as one project in 2023, or we, we could spend it later, but we just wanted to kind of, kind of put that out there so that it was identified as such. So in this plan, park dedication is very close to spent down, the balance that we've collected in park dedication funds is very close to spent down by the end of 2023 or into 2024. One of the things, as we build our five-year plan, we budget for park dedication fees that we know are going, you know, that we, we know are going to happen, but we don't budget for them as recurring at the same level every year because certainly development changes. So in those later years, we're, we're pretty conservative until we know there's going to be additional, additional funding. As we look kind of towards, towards those later years in the five-year plan, one thing, and this has been ongoing as long as I can remember, the renovation and maintenance portion of that Parks Capital is really a large pressure on this fund. Certainly, we look at what funds are available and program those projects as we can, but we certainly are often times deferring projects farther out in that area. So as we go out into the future, we know that additional tax levy will be necessary to really fund that ongoing maintenance for those, for those, for those parks that we have. And any enhancements or additions outside of kind of what we've programmed in terms of project levels in the CIP would require additional levy support. And like I said, we have already assumed we're, we're, we will have projects identified for that 1. million, 1.9 million. So that certainly is part of that. What's, a point that's not up here, kind of, kind of to piggyback on that last part, anything we do build also puts ongoing out-year pressure, long-term pressure on that renovation and maintenance budget. So it's just one thing to keep in mind as we're looking at things in certain parks. I mean, I'm sure Ryan would speak to this, certain, certain parks require more maintenance than other certain kinds of facilities. So.
Okay. Dan, Kate?
It makes you think when, when you look at the money that's coming in now, even aside from the 1.9 from Waste Management, and you think back five years ago, it was zero to 82,000. How in the world did we fund anything out of, you know?
We didn't. And that's why we didn't.
We found rotted buildings and some things that we need, right?
And the things that you and I saw when we went out on that tour.
Exactly.
It was really bad.
I mean, we're talking, that's like zero to 80,000 a year is not much to repair all the assets that we have.
Yeah.
And now you look at what's coming in since all of the development is happening. And I'm thinking, we must have a pretty good fund balance, right? Or we're now playing catch-up and we're, we're getting all of those things that have been backlog for so long replaced or repaired, et cetera.
Well, we can only use the park dedication for new things. So we're able to do some new things with, yeah, yeah.
And that's right. I didn't realize, I forgot about that. Now I know why you asked that question earlier. It's, you can, we don't want to make the mistake that the council makes and put in all this new stuff and not have the funding to maintain it and then be in a deficit constantly, right?
Correct.
We got to be careful. So it's great to have new money. We got, we got to be able to obviously maintain.
We have to know how.
What goes in new will require some maintenance down the road, right?
Yes.
We need to maintain so it, we get to sustainability and then we understand what it is that we need to do for the future. But we have to think about all of our new residents. Yes, Garrett?
And Madam Mayor, I think that's one of the reasons why not only the, the whole concept of accessibility to playgrounds is, is such a priority with, and being in the quadrants and even looking at ways to do pathways of port-in-place, but that also reduces short-term maintenance needs if you're not out trying to shovel in new wood chips and rake them all the time. And if you visit playgrounds, you see the divots under swings and as slides and stuff like that too, right? So, you know, we referenced the Egan all-inclusive playground, you know, that was an $800,000 playground. These playgrounds cost twice as much as, so you eat that. These playgrounds cost twice as much as, so you eat that money up pretty quickly.
We had the Lions Club help us with ours.
Ours was $240,000, right? And we made every penny of that work in that space and are very grateful because without the Lions, those types of things hadn't been programmed in. So to be able to have one, super thankful to hopefully add at least three more. You know, Crystal Beach seems like a phenomenal location to do one and, and things like that, right? But that, that 1.9 will go pretty quickly, depending how we ultimately choose to use it too, right?
But let's not, you know, I don't know what you, because the 1.9 is, that's just coming in. But we also have the 1.5 from MWF and we have the 2.3 from all of the Healy Ramey. From the Healy Ramey site and all three projects together.
Yeah, there is some, you know, so for Healy, I think the largest of the Healy Ramey, probably some of that was spent on previous CIP improvement plans as well because that was received in 2019, 2020.
We might have used some of that to, because we used park dedication fee to enhance the Nicollet Commons project when we did that. I think it was about $500,000, for example, to, to do the lighting and the extra fountains and stuff. So those are ways that you can go into an existing project, enhance it and take advantage of these, you know, it's a better experience, more opportunity and stuff like that, right?
Yeah. Ryan?
Note that, we're already showing approximately $2.4 million for the Kelleher Park renovation. That was based on, so if you look at this, I mean, Jenny said earlier, the park dedication runs out in approximately 2024.
Yep.
So, but that includes a huge allocation to the Kelleher building already. But that doesn't cover the whole thing that you were seeing there.
And we also all need to understand when there is existing buildings, for instance, the shopping center. And if they renovate and it's on the same footprint, they already paid that park dedication.
Correct.
So that we won't be, however, the new outlots need park dedication. So those are some of the things that we can look at and we have a plan there. But, you know, that's a long time out. So even with the new renovations in the shopping center for the Asian market, there's no park dedication coming out of that money. And so we have to be careful because we don't have any new money coming in because we're all built out. And the ones that have already have product on it right now, and if they raise it and, and we put in a new product, there's no park dedication because it's already been paid. So we have to be careful about all of that as well. So right now the balance then, Jenny? What's the balance in the park fund?
Well, the, I think in terms of where we ended up at your end, I'm going to say, I think it's about, it's a couple million dollars. Well, actually it's more than that because we received the 1.9 early. So kind of where we stand right now, I think we're in the 3.5 million dollar range. I would, I would need to check that, but that's where the balance is right now. But like, as Ryan said, we have, we have the 1.9 kind of as a placeholder out of this. That's why you see that balance going down.
So you think the balance is for? 4.1?
1.9 is for the park dedication, or I mean, excuse me, for the waste management kind of placeholder. And then we do have some programmed in funds for the Kelleher building, although we know that we still have a shortfall there. So that's probably on hold until we, until we get those funding sources together.
So I'm just looking at funds. So if 1.89 is, hasn't been spent yet. And so if I'm looking down your estimated 2022, is it 4.1 that's not spent yet? Or have they been spoken for?
They haven't been spent. They've been, we've got placeholders, right? So the, so we've got the 1.9 kind of out there as, you know, to be identified. And then we've also got some, some budget for, set aside for Kelleher Park, should that go forward. So they haven't been spent yet. We've preliminarily allocated, allocated those funds. I do believe there is funding for the I-35W trail as well. That's park dedication, I believe.
Madam Mayor, if I may. Again, as we started exploring the possibility of reimagining Kelleher Park, and we knew that it would be brand new stuff. It would be a different experience, things that this could cover. So some of those dollars are there for Kelleher Park if we choose to go that direction. If, if we decide not to, there is currently zero money other than the playground replacement for like 90 some thousand dollars to do anything at Kelleher Park, right? So all of these things, we can do any of them and yet, you know, each one of them has some implications on something.
And that's the reason why I'm looking at the fund, the dollars. Not, not, you know, what Waste Management is bringing in or what the Healy Ramey property is brought in or what MWF brought in. How much do we have there and how much do we need to get done?
Yep. So I think the, the big chunk, the 1.9 is completely unallocated. Being discussed tonight, the rest of it is kind of sitting as a placeholder for Kelleher if we choose to go that direction. The bulk of that is, we've just been building it up. I think we started this in 20, I want to say, I went down this road in 2018 or 2019 and started slowly adding money to the CIP, knowing that it was going to take a while to build it, to engage the community and that kind of stuff in hopes that we would, if we did have a plan someday, that we would have some money as a placeholder for it. So that's where the bulk of that is sitting, if I remember correctly.
How much is that?
I want to say we're at $2.6 million. I think it was 1.6 initially and then another 900,000 was added. So what is that, 2.5 million dollars?
We have 2.5 for Kelleher now.
Yeah. And then we have the county that
I think that's answered the mayor's question. How much money do we have?
How much, yeah, and I don't care where it's coming from. I want to know how much money we have. Don't say, don't tell me, you know, it's a, you know, this is, money is money. And the need is the need. So what is it? For whom and at what cost? For whom? It's for the people down in that area, you know? And at what cost? So we have these funds, you know, we have new funds coming in, 1.8. That's added on to all of that. So what is it that we need to get done? You know?
I think for me, the easiest approach is to leave the existing funds and the plan for those things to continue forward, Kelleher or whatever else we end up doing. And, and as staff has sort of set this placeholder of the 1.9 aside and see what we can address that's outside of the plan that's new, that we believe is going to meet the needs of the community that maybe hasn't been represented yet. Because I think it's easier that way just to say, okay, let's leave the plan as the current funds in the plan for where those sources are. And think of the 1.9 as what can we do that is outside of this existing plan that can actually add value and add amenities to the community with respect to the accessible and maybe this footsall facility or something else. But something that is truly different than just, okay, let's just take this park and update it. That's great. Did it change anything really dramatically about who's using it and how they're using it? It enhanced it, but is it just putting more money into that old model? Maybe a little bit of that too. So I would like to see this 1.9 be used in more standalones.
You could put a footsall, you know, facility in there.
Yeah, that would be great.
So it's about reimagining, not, not just doing the same thing. But what's going to meet the need of that population down in that area?
Agreed. And if that, if that's one of the ideas is, is doing that, then maybe the, the cost of that renovation of that park of two and a half or what it was going to be, maybe it changes a little bit because we're going to use some of this 1.9 to inject this new facility.
That's why I want to know funds, funds and put it into where the need is. And if you want to put another footsall into Crystal Lake.
In like a different park, right?
Yeah, then you can, you can do that. But the thing is, it's having a plan in the CIP and then understanding what, how much money we have. But we also need to make sure that you have money in that plan for renovation and improvements and keeping it up. Because it needs to be kept up so that it can continue to thrive.
But that can't be park dedication fees. That's got to come from
No, that comes, that comes from the general fund.
Yep. So we can, we can truly manage that separately because we have to. It can't be mixed, right?
Yeah, and that comes out of the general fund and I understand that. But if we put new asset in, then that asset needs to be maintained. Then it comes out of something else.
Agreed.
Ryan?
Garrett can correct me, but that state plan we're showing there for Kelleher is four plus million dollars is the estimate. So there's, there's like 2.4 or 5 million dollars in there now.
So far, and got your
So if we want to make that a reality, you basically either A, have to do some type of bonding or B, take the 2.4 plus the entire 1.9. So that doesn't, so far hasn't included one.
Or take a look at what you, how it was reimagined and say, can we put a footsall park in there? Why? Because that's the population that's going to use it.
And I would like to see what we're going to truly, more detail on what we think we want to spend four and a half million dollars on in one park. Right? That, I think that's something I want to scrutinize. But I don't want to just go, yeah, that's great. It's part of the plan. Let's throw four and a half million in one park.
No, 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 no. That's the reason why I want to say, what are we going to do? How much money do we have? And where are we going to do it?
Mayor, councilmembers, what I'm hearing, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is staff needing to do a very strategic, significant community convening to see what exactly is needed, especially in these underrepresented areas of the city. I would propose that I have staff with community engagement do that. And then we come back at some point when that's done, probably late spring would be my guess. We have time to spend, spend the money and then bring back these ideas from this new, new reaching out to the community. So I think it is important that we bring the community together first to decide what their interest is and bring that back to you folks and then give us direction with that in light of some of the new discussions.
I like that idea.
Yeah, that's, that's really the, the best idea. You understand the discussion tonight. You understand that we need to make sure that we listen to our underrepresented community and that there are some play space, like the footsall fields that can be done. So I know Garrett has his
Madam Mayor, in 2017, the Park and Rec system master plan update was about $70,000. Took about five months of staff time and consultant work. So I'm, you know, they generally last about 10 to 15 years unless you have a significant thing that's happened, right? So we can certainly move that up. But I think in order to, I, I guess I would, I would hope that in order to truly take a look at everything, it would involve staff and our community engagement resources, of course, but also bring in, in looking at possibly updating that and, and budgeting money to do that. So I'm curious
That is operations, Garrett?
Okay.
The, the policy direction is you, you all understand what it is that we want to do for our community.
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I just want to clarify, we don't have any money set aside next year in the 23 budget for additional surveys or, or master plan being redone. I'm hearing that council want us to find some sort of community engagement. Just, I, I just want to level set that that might not be, you know, very wide, right? I mean, I'm hearing that we want to get to some of the underrepresented community and hear some feedback. I just, if we don't have that budgeted, right?
Do we need a master plan or do we need just another good survey?
Yeah, I think we, we need to supplement the 2017 with some additional work that probably didn't get done in 2017. So it's not like we have to throw it out and start all over with the wholesale. I really think, and that may or may not have a consultant involved, but I, it definitely can supplement. The plan itself is pretty solid, but it's just missing representing the rest of the community. I think we just do that. We don't need to reinvent that whole 2017 thing.
I don't think so either.
We, we hadn't identified that in the budget. So we just need to figure out what's the best way. So we may be coming back to you with some alternatives to do that. So I just wanted to level set that, that next year we didn't have that identified as, as on the radar for Park and Rec to do or finances to support that. So I'm hearing from, from council that you want some sort of engagement. Let us figure out what's the best way to do that, given the resources. We might be coming back to you with some ideas on that. And I'm hearing that the two priorities, I've heard that you'd want the engagement around our footsall and ADA. So to Hugo's point about where we put those things and what do we do? But am I hearing that's kind of the, the priorities out of the council? How does that fit into the, the current master plan and how do we get some more engagement?
And, and you're, and you're managing expectations from us. And so that's what I'm hearing you say, you know, it's not budgeted. So your staff is going to have to do some work and come back. And you're going to focus on our underserved community and our adaptive uses.
Madam Mayor, if I may. Crystal Beach, Coventry Court and Alomagnet are three playgrounds that are in need to be replaced and are budgeted for 2023.
But that's already been approved.
Yes. And to do a, to put port in place into them, like I said, it can cost anywhere from 30 to 50% more. I'm just curious if council is, is supportive of me pursuing at least Crystal Beach or something to have a more enhanced type of port in place component to it. Or if we want to hold off on making any of those decisions. Because that, that was one of the locations that meets a quadrant that has not been met. It does need to be done this year. And in order for me to start working on it and, and doing that, having some direction in the near future would be helpful. But if it's, if it's not on the table, then I either need to table those, those pieces of equipment.
That was in the CIP that was adopted.
Correct.
Okay, if it wasn't a CIP that was adopted, then it is adopted.
Yeah, I don't, that's, I think that's okay to go forward with because it still fits in part of what we're trying to do anyway.
Not necessarily to the level of our placeholders for replacing community playgrounds does not account for having port in place materials, right? So I guess what I'm asking is, yes, we have the adopted CIP money to replace the playgrounds and improve them a little, but not to the level of what we're talking about tonight. And that's
No, the level of what we're talking about tonight is a separate discussion that staff is going to do an addendum to the study and come back with, here's what you're going to need to do that work. And oh, by the way, council, you're going to have to amend the budget.
I'm sorry.
If I'm hearing this correctly, if I could just quickly, so I'm hearing from Garrett is that we have some CIP projects in the next year that might be good candidates for like the ADA type of stuff. So should we A, put those on hold until we figure out what we want to do so that we don't invest money into parks? That might be better to have some of this investment to make them ADA once we get some more input, right? So that even though the approved CIP is there, is it worth putting some of those on hold until we get more information? So that we don't go do a rehab on a park and then say, we wish we would have invested and done ADA. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
I didn't hear him right. I thought the ADA piece was part of what you had, you're just talking about, it was, it was programmed to get, you know, rehab. I agree 100%. Let's not do it until we get our plan together.
So the thing is, from a policy point of view, staff, okay?
We'll figure it out.
Put it on hold and, and do the operational activity. And I think your suggestion with getting an amendment and doing, getting back into the community is a wise one. That'll help us. Vince, are you okay with that direction?
Yes.
Danji?
Oh, yeah.
I would like to say anecdotally though, that when we were down at Kelleher, there was a couple of kids there that asked us not to get rid of the basketball courts.
I know.
So as we do this, let's stay focused on the basketball courts because they use those extensively at Kelleher.
Well, kids like playing basketball. It doesn't matter what Basketball. It doesn't matter what.
No, we're just putting that out there as we move forward. Footsall kind of stole the show tonight, but basketball is still very much important.
Yeah, yeah. Always have a basketball hoop. Kids like to shoot hoops.
And Madam Mayor, you're just, so Crystal Beach, I will be tabling for the near future. Alumagnet and Coventry Court are in such condition and probably not candidates for a full-blown port in place anyhow. I just wanted to make sure that I would like to continue forward with replacing those two because we don't have a slide at one of them and the other one is in really bad shape, right? So this would be more of that $800,000 Egan type of park as opposed to $150,000 replacement type project.
Well, it was already in the CIP, already approved. And the other part, you can tape and then we'll get more information and then we can move forward. From a policy level, you have your direction. Is it clear?
Yep, so we will put the Crystal Beach Playground on hold. We will work on some sort of more community engagement. We'll probably have to come back with what that looks like financially. And we'll focus on footsall and ADA and how that works in with the Parkmaster Plan and the new information we get. And come back with, with a plan or some suggestions for councils. Is that clear?
That's.
Is that what, did I capture that correctly?
Yeah, yeah, that's the policy direction.
You should do something that obligates Greg into a whole bunch of stuff that he cries over when he comes back.
I think we just did that already.
I will already do that. Don't worry.
He may not be watching.
Trust me, he's watching us right now.
Yeah.
He is.
Yeah, yeah. And my hope is that he's not because I had text Amy and said, you know, just make sure he goes to sleep.
I told him shut it off.
Oh, you did? Okay, between you and me. Stay asleep. Get healed. Okay, very good. So staff has direction.
We have direction.
And staff will do some work and they understand what needs to be done. Okay, so then we now go, the next item on the agenda then is council assignments. Michelle, you're on deck.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. We have, before you, everybody should have, for the council, you should have your council assignments list by focus area and by agency and group. Every year, the council has asked us to put this on the December work session to consider. And so that is what is on the agenda for this evening. Before you, you have what is currently for 2022. And so any changes you'd like to make for 2023, please let me know.
Okay, anybody want any changes with their assignments?
Like my assignments.
Okay, and this is good. Are you okay with your assignments? Kara?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay.
I'll care.
Yeah, okay.
Be a learn from this.
Okay, and then the next one is on round table and this is the panhandling ordinance. And this is something that Councilmember Keely and I were at a conference and we heard from, well, it's an issue throughout the whole country, but we heard from a couple of cities that had ordinance. And we brought this back and so, and I had talked to some of them about how our attorneys read it and they understood it, but they still had their ordinance. So I think you got the ordinance to Greg and I think the only thing that we need to do tonight with that is give, have everybody understand it and then give staff direction to do more work. And I think that the chief has also seen that. Did you see that? Yeah, yeah.
I, I think we're just looking for direction. If there's consensus amongst the council and council majority for us to do more work and bring it to a work session so that we can gather more fact finding and get you some more info because I.
Yeah, and pro and con on the constitutionality of all of this.
Yep, there's a lot of work to be done, a lot of research. We're going to need some, you know, Joel's opinion on some of this and giving us some guidance. So I don't, we don't have any expertise in this at this point. There's more work to be done. We just want to make sure that council will be okay with staff spending time on that and coming back to a work session to discuss it.
Vince, are you okay with directing staff to take a look at a panhandling ordinance?
I 100% support it. I encourage it.
That's fine. It's what I want anyway.
Yeah.
Do you mind if I comment on it before we, you gather up the sentiment?
Yeah.
And I appreciate you expediting the process. I'd like to, I'd like to make some comments.
He's Daniel.
Well, you can, you can make the comments when I think everybody's been.
Mayor's whipping for you.
I know and I, hey.
I just want to point out that we, I just, I gathered three cities from that conference that I spoke to. Probably many others, but what we learned is there's one out there that is probably not a good example. And it's Glendale, Arizona, who basically just wrote up a straight up panhandling is outlawed. And that's going to get challenged.
Oh.
The other two cities are in Colorado.
Yeah.
Who kept it, they didn't really use panhandling, right? They basically said, there's no solicitation, no sitting or laying in the median. And they put in restrictions on how medians can be used. So they got, they, they got around saying, you know, you're not allowed to panhandle in the medium. They're just saying, you can't sit, stand, lay, you know, Lloyd or whatever in the medians. And there's signage that they put up. Brighton, Colorado did a very similar thing based on, you know, there's no occupation of the meeting, a median. It's unlawful to occupy the median as a, as a person, right? Because of safety reasons and all these other, so it's a little more narrow and specific to the, to the person being there in the median, not what they're doing and whether they have a first amendment right to do that. It's about being there in the median, period. And so I think we have some good direction and this is only from three and there's probably plenty more. We need to provide staff the, the approval to do a little deeper dive on it and be able to work with legal and come back with something done.
So we got 100% from Vince and Dan G and you're in favor. Of course I'm in favor.
Well, I don't know.
And Kara?
I am okay with looking at it.
Yeah, unless we have information, you can't really make a decision.
I, I, I don't think, I think problems come in cycles. And whether you do something about them or not, they go through a cycle. So I think we might be chasing something that is going to cycle out anyway. But I could be wrong in that, but let's take a look.
Well, we have, we have four who say go forward and do a deeper dive.
Yeah, I, I hope you're right, but based on what Dakota County presented.
I'm hearing you're talking about the medium thing, but that doesn't stop me from standing on the corner doing it. I'm not the medium any longer.
Right.
I'm so glad that the chief and the captain are here because this one has been the one that's been dealing with all of the.
Are the bell ringers.
Yeah.
They're out in front of places.
They're on private property.
Out in front of places.
Yeah, they're not in public right away.
But they're private property. This is right of way. This is our domain.
No, no, I get it. I get it. I know that's where Arizona went wrong. They weren't even going to let them on private property.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, good luck.
Well, that's not what Dan is.
But I'm just saying, I don't think the mediums are going to fix anything. And I agree with you. I think it has cycled. I watched our officers this last year engage the community that's been coming out here to do that. And it seemed like the more they were engaging them, in a very nice way, a very good informational way, but they became less and less over time because I, because I believe our police officers were engaging them on a regular basis. And I, I do think that was.
And being very respectful.
Yes.
Yes.
Being very respectful.
We did, we did it in a very good way.
Yeah, they were kind and respectful.
But it did make a difference.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not there right now. I can tell you that.
Okay, so chief, you, you got the direction to go forward and let's do some more work and come back with what are the possibilities, pro and con?
Yep, we've got direction to move forward. Just level setting. It'll take us some time to, to do that research and get it on a council work session. So we will work on that.
Yeah, no, I mean, I wasn't surprised when we were at this conference and heard that we weren't the only city that was dealing with this and challenged with it. And so.
Should we go out to NLC?
Yeah.
They're talking about there too.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, the next one is, Michelle, you have an interview for a vacant PNRC youth position.
Actually, Madam Mayor, we just received an application and this is not the typical time for us to do these interviews. But in, in our last interview cycle, we did have a vacancy that was never filled. So I thought I would bring to you to see if you were interested in meeting for a 15-minute brief interview with this applicant to see if he could actually get on board and get a half a cycle in. If I remember right, I think he's a sophomore. So.
We can get some more years out of him.
Not just be a half year term.
You can just get one.
And because we have had some difficulty getting all of these positions filled every year, I thought you might want to consider that. So if you want to set a date for that, I did not, I do not have any great proposed dates for that because we are, of course, coming up on a lot of vacations during the holiday.
Could we do it on our first meeting in January, which is a very, very short, short little meeting?
You want to do it before?
Before.
Can we make 5 o'clock on January 3rd work?
I'm sure I can.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yep. Dan, Dan K?
Looking.
Vince?
I'm sure it's not going to be a problem.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we'll do it then. 5 o'clock? Yeah, okay. Reports. Vince, you have anything?
I have nothing.
Spirits Burnsville, we just had our last meeting of the year. We're transitioning to Mercury for our marketing now, so we're going to be coordinating with what the city's doing, which I think would be good synergies. The board had voted to lobby for a new hotel. So they're going to be actively doing that. Unfortunately, we have some people that know about hotels on that committee.
Yeah.
And so they'll be doing that. They, they understand it's the city's job and it's Jeff's job to get it done, but.
No pressure.
But they're going to be back and you have to get a new hotel in town and they, they feel it's very important. The other thing that is, in the preliminary stages that we're talking about, and we want to talk, talking about a series of classes for the hotel owners. And they want to, they're going to, I know they're going to reach out to the city and talk to our chiefs about this as well. And it's about classes for helping them to identify human trafficking, drug trafficking, behavioral health issues and that sort of thing. And how, how can the hotels work with all of us to do that and keep their, their other guests safe in that? So I think that's a really good program for us to get into. For them, they're going to get into it and they may want a little help from their chiefs to maybe show up once in a while and say.
Yeah, and I think our police chief has been engaged in all of those too.
I just wanted you to know it's preliminary until everybody agrees that the time works for everyone. So I think it's a really good program and it's a good, it's a good way to get our hotels engaged again because they, quite frankly, they haven't been real engaged over the last few years and it's time. So that's where we're at.
Okay.
You had a report on me, Dan.
That was about the longest one in the history of your service here.
It is not.
I will have something to report the next time. We have a DBB meeting tomorrow. So we'll see what comes out of that.
And the Dakota Communications is going well? Okay. Dan K?
I, I've been active with the NLC, TAS. We had our first chair, chairs meeting. There's two vice chairs. I'm one of them and the chair in our liaison from NLC and, and sort of establishing our priorities for next year. And mine are advanced air mobility related and micro mobility and also some public transit and some funding types of things. I'm really pressing or leaning into the on-demand service that MVTA has experienced unbelievable success with. And finding around the country, talking to my peers on the committee over the last year, hardly anyone's really thought about it. So it's, it's going to be something I want to bring to the table. The, I did accept, as I mentioned earlier, I believe, vice chair of MVTA. I've been on MVTA, I think going back to 2010 with a couple of years off. But in 2023, I'll be vice chair and I would assume in 2024, I will assume chair. And also on I-35 Solutions, I've been vice chair the last two, three years. I'm not going to be vice chair in 2023, but I am going to run for chair in 2024 if the current chair, our representative of Burnsville to the Dakota County Commission decides to step down. So just sort of getting into some leadership roles in some of these transportation committees. I will be attending the NLC Leadership Conference, which will be in Tacoma, Washington. It was in Atlanta this, this year. It was a great experience. And I'm hoping that after 2023, I'll apply for chairship of the TAS in 2024. And given the leadership of the NLC that year, I'm, I'm pretty confident that I'll have a very good shot at being named chair, which will put me on the board, which is ultimately where I can maybe have some even more influence. So leaning into these assignments with transportation in a, in a pretty big way. MVTA, at our last meeting, we had a ridership presentation.
Can I just ask a question as you're leaning in on all of these transportation? And I know that NLC had had quite a few Zoom meetings on the IIJA because I've been having a lot of meetings on IIJA.
Yeah, that's been the topic for the last year. It's been.
Yeah, but now, you know, with the allocation of funds, are you getting more information on?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, NLC.
Because of how much money is coming into Minnesota. But the other thing is that when you're doing all of that work is, I don't know if Minnesota has already done its allocation. Does anybody know on a staff level how the, the federal money is going to be distributed? Do you?
I, I don't, I know, I'm not following what Mendat's doing or the state of Minnesota in getting their allocation, but I do know that.
Does it go to Mendat or does it go to the legislature and then the legislature? I don't know the, the procedure with IIJA.
As I understand, it's running through the normal challenge of federal allocation of dollars. It'll come to Met Council, which it already has, and an allocation was made and five projects in Burnsville with, related to transit and others were funded. Now, it's, it wasn't, it was sort of a, a regional solicitation style approach. And, and I haven't been on TAB for a while, but we got a huge update.
Is it Ryan?
But it's.
Because, does it go to the TAB?
Some of that money comes, some of the money comes through TAB, yes. Because we, TAB and we not, TAB ended up awarding projects and.
From the solicitation, the federal solicitation.
Transit-related project.
Yeah.
And MVTA was very, very happy to receive several awards. Southwest Transit had one in there. It didn't score well and they did not get successfully supported.
We write all those letters for MVTA.
Yeah, I, I will say that the vote on TAB, which got us, I think we have, we had five submissions in, was 17 to 15 to get it through. Like I said, Southwest had one in that didn't get supported. As far as the rest of the IIJA for, you know, I, I'm told that it's coming through the states. But the focus at NLC is around that. It's, it's the direct, right?
And it's the same with the USCM.
It's the one bill, probably the first transportation bill in history possibly, where cities can directly apply and get direct funding. It does not have to go through the state, so.
We've had three meetings on that. So the thing is with Ryan, as we look at, because it's a huge TAB for the 13 nickel interchange.
That's the one that I've been representing along with a couple others, but that one has been the key one lately to, to, to do. And I believe I, we've conversed about it and I believe that, you know, it's going to, it would require a lot of staff time to be able to go through this on our own. And I believe Ryan referred to as, we're probably, we don't really have the staff time to like, sort of act like we don't have Mendat and the normal channel of federal funding and to try and do it ourself. But, so I've been approaching it and advocating for how we can get funding through other avenues, through, you know, other types of transportation.
Direct application for those grants and that's why I was thinking Anne's firm. I always forget it. It's.
Lockridge.
Yeah, Lockridge.
Lockridge, Glendale, right.
Yeah, LGN has an office in Washington. Can you find out if they write grants? Can you find out if they write grants? Because that's the big thing, is writing for those grants and really understanding the criteria for the IIJA.
That bill has enormous funding and support and resources available to help cities. It really, they wrote it to say cities that are, you know, 20,000, they have small city staff.
Technical support.
You can tap into all these resources, and they will help walk you through the entire process.
Technical support.
So it was, it was almost written not to go through states, like it was said, as if they said, let's set this up so every city, no matter what size, can directly go through this application process and forget the usual allocation trickle-down of funds, right?
This was direct, you write for the grant, and it comes directly to the cities, and that's what we advocated from the very beginning.
The bill was written, it was actually written in that it had to be done that way.
And because Pete Buttigieg knew that that was the, that was a priority.
It was a soft vendor.
Yeah, yeah.
My recollection is programs like Infra and Raise Grant are part of the IIJA, so we are actively participating or attempting to participate in those solicitations.
Okay. All right. With both Dan and I from NLC and USCM, we could probably help with, in that regard also. Okay, go ahead with your report because I didn't want you to go through without seeing what you have already learned.
Well, I just, I was touching on that, the MBTA getting award of those projects, there's some Burnsville transit station projects funded in there and modernizations. I just wanted to highlight that the new app that we've been working on, that's been worked on for months, is, is getting close to coming out. It's going to be phenomenal because it's, it's, I would call it the most advanced public transit app when a person can plug in a location and say, I want to go from Burnsville to, you know, Coon Rapids, for example, and how do I get there in public transit and to a specific address in public, right, in Coon Rapids, and I need to be picked up at my home. It incorporates the private sector Uber, Lyft model along with the public transit model that we have and, of course, the others, so it's all in one. It's, it's the most advanced public transit app I've ever seen, and I'm, I'm really excited when that comes out. We're, we're doing all kinds of modernizations to the bus, to the systems, to the notifications, the monitors, monitoring the buses themselves, so a lot of technology investment in this past year. And from an STA standpoint, one change that just happened, we're a member of the Suburban Transit Association. The law firm, Mezzoli and Kramer, created the STA many, many years ago. James is departing, representing us. He's going to focus on his DC work, and Courtney and one other person who's normally not on our calls are breaking off and working for a new POOL-HOZ, P-O-U-L-HOZ firm.
And I was going to, I'll report on that from MLC, and because Haas is a big public safety lawyer.
Yeah, it's a, for us, from a STA standpoint, it's continuity. We're, we're really following the people who have done the work, and Courtney has gotten her law degree and became a lobbyist a year or two ago, and now she's taking over the lead that James has been doing for many, many years in this new outfit. So we literally just voted on that Monday, yesterday, sorry, and we had a meeting about it last week in preparation for it. So some, some lobbying representation changed, but not, not major change, just end switching to this new firm. I'm trying to think, there was something else transit-related. NLC, MBTA, I-35, we're just setting up for next year's schedule, looking for speakers and stuff. And that, of course, I-35 has, as Dan knows, has a lot of folks representing, they're elected and staff from Minneapolis all the way down to Elko, New Market, and so there's some interest in that group related to IIJA and related grant funding for transit, transportation. Big projects there, obviously dealing with the 494, I-35 interchange and the three phases that are going to be involved in that. One of the most congested intersections, I think it's in the top three in the country, is I-35W and 494 interchanges, you know, some of the worst in the country, so really overdue, but coming soon. And I think that's it. That's it, sorry. Thank you.
Okay. So some changes also, the Regional Council of Mayors was, had ULI as our fiscal agent, and we broke away from that, and the Edina Community Foundation is going to be our fiscal agent, but we, so on Monday, we talked about our story, and the Regional Council of Mayors was co-founded by myself, Karen Anderson, and Karen Duer, and, and so we started with eight mayors, and now we have a lot of mayors from within the metropolitan area. And so that's what happened. We told a story, and we also brought in people who helped us in the founding of the organization, people like Ted Mondale, who was the former Metropolitan Council Chair, Jay Lindgren from Dorsey and Whitney, who at the time was with the Metropolitan Council Region, as a regional administrator, and Nate Garvis from Target. These were our former partners, and so we talked about the history and the story. So the new co-chairs of the RCM is now Brad Wyerson from.
We're some.
Yeah, from Minnetonka, and Bert from Woodbury. Forget her last name, but anyway. And then last week at MLC, we did the same thing. We voted on the change of who will represent us, and Greg and I talked about our representation, MLC, and we looked at the past performance review of Tom Pol and his group, and so we wanted to go with the continuity. We also liked the fact that Nancy Haas was part of that team and Tony Albright. And so it was a very good bipartisan mix on that team, and we like the fact that they'll continue to work and understand our, our agenda, and I like the fact that Nancy Haas, I think Nancy says she knows you, both chief, Nancy, Nancy Haas, she's a lawyer, she teaches at Inver Grove Hills as well, Inver Hills, for public safety. Yeah, and so she knows both of you? So that was good. So we went with the new Pol-Haas, I don't know, team, anyway. And that's all that I have for right now. Let's see, anything else on my side? We haven't met Ryan with Savage, we already, because we only meet. Yeah, so that's good. And then, of course, we've been cutting for Takajans, and we have two coming up Thursday?
Thursday.
Yeah, okay. And that's it? Chief, is there anything else from staff side?
Nothing else from staff, Mayor.
Okay, and Michelle, you have everything? We stand adjourned by acclamation, and thank you so much, everybody. Sorry we are so late, but there was a lot of discussion, but thank you.